It's now 6:44. I call to order the virtual board meeting of the Oak Park and Forest High School Board of Education on Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Gail, could you please call the role?
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
I'm here.
Mr. Martyri?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Moore? Dr. Moore? Well, we know she's here. And Ms. Spivey, Dixon Spivey?
Yeah, here. Do we have any visitor comments this evening? It's our first item on the agenda.
We absolutely do. Just one moment. Okay, the first one is from Michael Iverson. At the April 20th, April 2020 meeting, the District 200 Board of Education discussed several options concerning the district, concerning how the district should address future capital projects. The decision made by the Board of Education at that meeting was to proceed as planned with Phase One projects. Before any discussion tonight regarding the issuance of debt certificates to pay for capital projects, I request that the committee of the whole reconsider proceeding as planned with Phase One projects. The current Phase One project as planned has been rendered obsolete by the COVID-19 pandemic. Until an inter and transdisciplinary team comprised of not only District 200 administration staff, teachers, but also inclusive of architects, mechanical engineers, construction management, healthcare, and social service professionals with expertise specific to COVID-19 reviews the current Phase One project. District 200 is likely to proceed with bond issuance and construction based on a plan rendered obsolete by the pandemic. In these uncertain times, there needs to be plans in place for various possible scenarios, including a short-term and temporary scenario for end summer, fall 2020, intermediate term and temporary scenario entire 2020, 21 academic year, and long-term and permanent scenario, future proof. I recommend that District 200 consider any pandemic reentry eventuality affects the school campus and building planning and operations. Schools need not only respond to a new normal in curriculum and operations, but in every aspect of building space, mechanical systems, and circulation flow from demystifying spatial layouts in classrooms, cafeterias, gyms, lockers, lobby, outdoor space, et cetera, to social distancing, planning of circulation flows in corridors, arrivals, departures, assemblies, et cetera. From my experience as an architect, planner, and most recently a substitute teacher at every one of the 1097 school buildings and three proviso high schools, I can ensure you that every aspect of facility space, circulation, and operations that occurs throughout the day needs to be rethought for short, intermediate, and long-term horizons, especially for a high school of the size of enrollment. Since future events are uncertain due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, it seems that due diligence would necessitate that Phase One project plans based on an old normal to be revisited and reviewed by District 200 for possible new normals and scenarios. I recommend before deciding on a 15 to 20-year debt issuance, the District 200 Committee of the whole and Board of Education pause Phase One project decisions until planning, design, and economic impact over COVID-19 crisis to OPRF can be better assessed. Then, from Monica Sheehan, I respectfully request that the following questions be addressed and answered in an email response from the board, as well as hopefully during tonight's discussion, a finance section, item D, discussion of issuance of debt certificates to pay for capital projects. What does the $4 million refer to that accompanies each scenario in the comparison of construction costs and debt graphs? According to the agenda items memo, the all-in interest rate for the debt certificates would be 2.21%. Besides the estimated 3.4 million in interest, what additional costs would District 200 incur in issuing debt certificates? Specifically, how much money would District 200 pay financial consultant Rob Grossi's company, Crystal Financial, as well as Raymond James and Chapman and Cutter for this transaction? On average, what interest rate does District 200's cash reserve earn on an annual basis? If it is less than the reported 2.21% rate that will be owed on the debt certificates, it would be inadvisable to issue the certificates and take a debt to pay for Project One when the funds are available in the cash reserve. What specifically is included in the 10-year capital maintenance plan, and where can it be assessed on the school's website? Taking on debt and paying interest now for projects slated for five to 10 years in the future raises questions. At the December 18th, 2018 general meeting, the superintendent requested and the board approved the transfer of $20 million from the education fund to the capital projects fund. It's expressing for urgent needs in component D, now called Project Two, namely a 37-meter-by-25-yard swimming pool and a 600-seat auditorium. Is this $20 million earmarked for the pool and auditorium included in the fund balance in the comparison charts in tonight's meeting? I thank you for your time and consideration and look forward to the discussion and your email response. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Gail. Our next item is approval of the minutes of April 14th, 2020. Am I looking at the right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And on to the finance section.
Good evening, everyone. Our first item is the presentation of the Homecoming DJ contract. Making this presentation in the absence of Ms. Susan Johnson is Mr. Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy 4:60. At the conclusion of the presentation is recommended that the contract for Homecoming 2020 with Boom Entertainment at a cost of $30,957.30 be moved forward to the Board of Education for approval at its May 28th, 2020 board meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, everybody. Everybody hear me okay? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. A few quick points of introduction. I won't go through all the details in the cover memo, but first, I do want to extend Susan Johnson's apology for not being able to be here tonight for personal reasons. I also want to add a few things to what you see in the memo here. First of all, this is our existing vendor that we have used for a little while now. You can see what the costs have been for this vendor and the summary of findings over the previous years. I also want to underscore the fact that this event, Homecoming every year, is funded itself. It's a self-funding event, so this is nothing that is coming from the district's established resources. Secondly, or thirdly, I should say, this was an event that we actually didn't decide to bring to the board to this evening until mid-last week, and that's important because of the nature of the contract. Traditionally, they've had contracts that have had pretty traditional cancellation fees and postponement clauses, but in light of the situation that we find ourselves in late last week, they made some changes to their contract that allowed us to bring this forward to the board tonight for review and then hopefully for next Thursday for approval. And that is basically, it's a risk-free contract for us. Not only can we move this to a dance at a later time during next school year if we need to, this doesn't have to be for a September Homecoming dance, but we could also cancel this or extend it into next year, whatever we need to do. So because of that risk-free information in the contract, we decided to bring it forward for you tonight for consideration. And that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have.
Yeah, so Greg, I had a quick question. It's Martyri. The 60-day cancellation out has to be 60 days prior to the event, which would be July 26th. Are you going to know by July 26th whether you need to cancel or reschedule the event? I mean, you say it's risk-free. I didn't quite read it that way, so maybe the understanding is different than the language in the paperwork we have or in the memo, but it sounded as if if you didn't exercise that right, 60 days out, you lost
Yeah, so in conversations that we've had with Boom, we do believe that they're going to make every effort to work with us. By risk-free, I simply meant that if we exercise that clause in July, you're right, then we are able to get our full refund or move it to a later date. But we have every understanding that they are going to work with us because of the situation we find in and because of our longstanding working relationship with them.
Greg, this is Craig. Why would we enter the, what is the driving force to enter the contract at all at this point? Is it to secure a date or something else?
Yeah, it is. It is to enable us to have, if it is possible to have this dance in the fall, this enables us to, you know, kind of pin that date down exactly like you said. And so without doing this at this point, you know, if we are able to have a type of dance in the fall, we would be able to, you know, go with Boom in the same way that we've done in the past.
Hey Greg, I'm sorry, Craig, were you done? I had a question. Gina? My question is similar, Greg. Like, do you, when is Homecoming, when is Homecoming usually scheduled? And like, based on where we are now in the phases that the government, you know, like our governor has set forth? I'm just curious, your discussions about the real feasibility of a September Homecoming dance? In light of what, you know, like, what have the discussions been around that?
Well, it may not be likely that we're able to have a dance in September. That's, it's highly possible that the late September date might not be able to be honored by us. But because as we move into July, we will, let be, by having this in, by putting this contract forward right now, it allows us the possibility to at least consider this for the foreseeable future and not make that decision right now in this moment to say, we're absolutely pulling the plug on Homecoming at the date that we had already set. To answer the first part of your question, the Homecoming dance is set every year somewhere in the late fall, as soon as we're able to finalize and take a good look at the calendar and our next year's football schedule.
I have a follow-up question to that, Greg. So are they, is it not possible that if we asked, if we looked into this later, we would not be able to book for those same dates? I'm just not understanding why now either, because I don't, I don't, I don't know. September seems like really unrealistic to me, and I think that having, like, I don't know. Look, if we went to them and later and said, hey, just tell me about the timing. It still doesn't feel.
I think part of the reason for moving forward now was, while we've all agreed that the September date may not be feasible, but trying to lock in Boom, if you've ever been to Homecoming, it's like a major concert, and this group comes highly, highly booked. And so I believe part of it was at least getting us, you know, while the date may change, but at least having some option of having Boom. And as Greg said earlier, not wanting to run the risk of not being able to get someone if we try to book at a later date and they are not available.
What this allows us to do too is if by July, we realize that we can't have this dance in September, in late then we can contact Boom and we can say, look, we need to postpone this thing. We need to have it in October. We need to have it in November. We want to kind of hold a later date for you down the road. We don't know what that date might be at this point, and it would be totally premature for us to set any of those later dates. So right now, with the existing date that we have in September, we're going into this contract now with Boom. It allows us that flexibility before July to kick this down the road a little bit if we need, and if we find out after doing so that no dance is possible next year, which would be awful for our students and everybody involved. If we find out that that's not possible at all, then the contract still gives us that flexibility.
So then would the contract move, would you, whatever the dates would be for the following year? So, okay.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but those aren't set, Gina. That's right.
So I think any date that we set at this point is going to be somewhat arbitrary, just given the changing circumstances. I have no issues with the contract as presented, but I think it might be useful to start thinking about what metrics we're going to be looking for in come July to, you know, either proceed with that date or pick a new date, just so we have some sort of firm line in the sand as to what we need to see to be able to proceed with that date.
I think a lot of it will also hinge on how the state reopens. That's, and what the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Oak Park Department of Health give us as guidance. Every plan that we do now, we actually submit even to locker cleanouts and the flower pickup the other day, we have to run through the Oak Park Public Health.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Craig.
I'm sorry, Sarah, I had one. This is Jackie.
Oh, sorry, Jackie.
I'm, the way that I'm reading this, given that in July, the likelihood of anything of the scale of our Homecoming happening in September is not very likely. It seems as though we're going ahead with this contract to, for all intents and purposes, secure this company with, definitely for 2021, at the same rate. Is that correct? That there wouldn't be any increases or anything?
Yes, it is the terms of this contract as it moves forward, Jackie. That is correct. And yeah, it could be 2020, 2021. I just want to reiterate, it's possible, of course, that later in the fall, if September isn't possible, that, you know, we could have a dance, but your point is valid, right? Almost certainly, we're talking about 21.
And just from a communication standpoint, as we're talking about this, I think this goes both ways. I appreciate wanting to be hopeful and in terms of Homecoming, but also the guidelines even about school reopening, that any large gatherings are still going to be either prohibited or the rules are going to be so vastly different. So our venue is the student commons area or the field center. I can't remember which one.
Fieldhouse, yep.
Yeah, the fieldhouse. So I'm just really, how we communicate out, it could either make us look irresponsible that we're saying that we're planning, attempting September if, you know, some miracle occurs, and on the other side, that, you know, we're not being prudent. So I think.
You make some very good points.
Biggest goal is trying to secure a contract. To secure the contract is the, needs to be communicated.
Yes, this allows us the flexibility to make a decision by July that encompasses more information that we have. And but I think you're exactly right. The messaging about how this goes about needs to be sensitive to the realities that we find ourselves in. So, thank you.
So Greg, why does it need a date? Why shouldn't be, you're securing your services to provide the musical entertainment at our Homecoming at some yet-to-determine date in 2020 or 2021?
Because they have asked us to sign this contract with these rates by the end of this month.
Greg, could I add to that?
Yes.
I know that Susan was looking at making sure that once everything hopefully does open up, that we would be secured a time and a date. And you think about all the weddings, mitzvahs, bar mitzvahs, all of those celebrations that have been put on hold, which will be looking for someone to take care of their, you know, their event. And this way, we're guaranteed.
Carolyn, I just have to say, I appreciate that, Carolyn, but we're not securing a date. It's not going to happen in September. I mean, it's just not. And so we have a date in here that's not a real date, and the future date is a to-be-deetermined date, right, Greg? Up to us?
Yes, it would be up to us, depending on a variety of factors, of course.
Of course, and their availability. So I don't, I don't see why we put a date in there that everyone knows is a bad date, unless you're telling me you've already made the decision that you're going to sign the contract and on July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, or 4th, you're going to send them a notice saying the date's off, we're going to pick a different date. I just think the September 26th date is beyond unrealistic.
We can take this back to them prior to the regular board meeting, Ralph, based off of that feedback and see if the same terms and everything that we have in here, including the cancellation language and the kind of delayed language that they have in here, would be feasible, you know, without that type of precise potential starting date. I think your note of caution that that date is not realistic is spot on. Rather than, you know, jumping out in front of next fall's calendar at this point in the game and starting to cancel specific events, we wanted to try to get these rates in place, given the timeline we had. But I hear your note of caution. We'll go back to them and see if these same terms are possible without that same precise date, okay?
I have a question, if I may pose it. In the potential of maybe booking a 2021 date in the fall as a way of leveraging the relationship we have and acknowledging that hopefully by then, this, I don't know if that's at all, but I just put that out there as a possibility, because I know that in the contract, they're talking about you know, they refer to that as a way of locking in a 2020 rate, as if we had a 20 and 21. So I think it's really wise counsel that I've been hearing about. Any date that we put in the calendar, it's going to cause needless, you know, upset when it's just a number on a page, when we all know that it's really not going to happen. So that's, that's what I would say too, is that it's a two-way street. It's a discreet relationship, right? In terms of locking something in. And so I'm hopeful that they'll be amenable to some of this.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is being presented by Mr. Mike Carriosa, Chief Operations Officer. It's the contract with Building Security Service Renewal for SecureText. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and Board Policy 4:170 and 4:60. The recommendation is that the contract renewal with SecureText, as a conclusion of his presentation, be moved forward to the Board of Education meeting for approval, May 28th, 2020.
So good evening, board. This is our annual renewal of this contract. To refresh your memory, last year, we actually went out to the market and SecureText was one of the few firms that did the reply. And because of the volume of what we do, we use them primarily as our contract security company. They handle our evening, third shift, and they also handle our holidays. So that enables us to offload, outsource those shifts to this company. They're asking for an increase. They basically asked for a similar increase last year. It's dependent upon the fact that the Cook County has raised the minimum wage, and they are passing that minimum wage increase on to us. So you see the budget, this isn't a budget item, which is included in next year's budget. We're looking for about a 10% increase roughly, a little bit of extra in there. It's about an 8.3% increase in terms of what they're asking for year over year. It is a one-year contract, and we're looking for the board to move it forward and approve it in the regular board meeting. Are there any questions?
Okay, I don't think so. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the presentation of the insurance broker, RFP. As you know, previously, we had Gallagher making this presentation, as Roxanna Sanders, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Cindy Sador, Chief School Business Official, and Carolyn Gus, Director of Purchasing and Transportation. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four, Forego One. At the conclusion, I just recommended that we move the RFP for the insurance broker forward for approval. The service agreement with GCG at the special board meeting later this evening on May 19th, 2020.
Good evening. As Dr. Pruitt Adams mentioned, Gallagher Benefit Services is our current insurance broker and has been with the district since 2010. Their contract is expiring as of May 30th, 2020. In an effort to ensure the best value of insurance services for the cost, we went out to market and did an RFP. We received six proposals from Alliant, Connor and Gallagher One Source, Gallagher Benefit Services, GCG Financial, Horton, and NFP. All the proposals were reviewed. We looked at compliance with what the RFP requested for, scope of work proposed, and overall responsiveness to RFP. The chart that is presented in the memo sent to the board focuses on the distinguishing features of the six firms that submitted proposals. We looked at what the service focus was, how many members of the service team would be assigned to OPRF account, an average number of clients the service team handles, also if the insurance broker, as part of their consulting fee, offers of online benefit enrollment and administration portal, whether or not COBRA administration is included, and what the total cost for five years would be. So based on evaluation of each firm's qualification, client structure and philosophy, the scope of services and resources offered, and the total cost of services, the proposals from three companies were selected to be presented to the District Insurance Committee. As you know, the District Insurance Committee is comprised of representatives from different unions, from administration, from non-affiliates. So we asked two companies to provide presentations via Zoom. That was GCG Financial and Alliant. And then we asked all the insurance committee members to provide us feedback on the three proposals that were the finalists. Based on the committee presentations and additional extensive review of materials, reports, online services, reference checks, GCG was determined to offer the highest value relative to the cost of services. So today, we invited representatives from GCG Financial to talk to the board a little bit about what kind of, or the scope of services that they would offer if they were selected to be the new insurance broker. And I would ask Jesse Plas, who is the Vice President of GCG Financial, to start the presentation and introduce his team. Jesse?
Awesome. Thank you, Roxanna. And hi, everybody. Thank you for inviting us to present this evening virtually. I invited a few more team members than we typically would if we were in person at a board meeting, but being as it is, it's nice to put faces with names. So in the future, you'll be able to kind of identify who's who with GCG. Roxanna, or whoever has control of the presentation, I believe, the short PowerPoint overview of services and team members is. of services and team members is included in this. Do you want to just kind of page through that a little bit so we can see it on our screen and then kind of talk to? Again, thank you, everybody. My name is Jesse Poyce and I will be serving as a lead consultant for, for the GCG team. I've been with GCG. I've had to put a lot of mousse in my hair with no haircut now in three months. So, but I've been with GCG for, I just celebrated 15 years with GCG. And I work with many, many of the respected districts throughout the Chicagoland marketplace. Prior to GCG, I had been with, on the carrier and the provider network side for, for over a decade plus. I'm heavily involved with Illinois School Business Officials, we know as AASBO, and I serve also on the Risk Management Professional Development Committee. And I've also presented and authored many times for districts around the state. So that's a little bit. I'm kind of going in a preface as I introduce my team. Jeff Colker, I won't go through our introduction shortly. So we'll have a slide coming up on our full teams of services. If you go to slide number two is just a little background on GCG Alara. And Jeff, I'm going to turn it over. Jeff Colker serves the practice lead. And Jeff, why don't you?
Thanks, Jesse. And it's nice to meet everyone. And it's, it's hard to imagine some of the things you're dealing with today. Who would have thought you would have had to spend the time you did talking about a contract for a DJ, right? But it's, it's the world we're living in today. And we've certainly had to make significant adjustments in our business. We've put a lot of resources into helping our, our clients in the community just react to things going on with COVID and reopening and just managing the program. But I've been part of GCG for in excess of 25 years. We're a 45-plus-year-old agency in the Chicago area. You're going to see here the name, Alara Group as well. Almost four years ago, we went through a merger with kind of 24 like-minded companies that wanted to be strategic, they wanted to be independent, they wanted to kind of keep their local aspect, yet wanted resources that some of the national agencies have been able to bring together. And we felt we could build it better than if we just kind of merged with someone else. So you're going to see our name as GCG, you're going to see our name as Alara Group. I've worked very closely with Jesse and the team. I sit on Blue Cross Blue Shield's Producer Advisory Council. I've had that position for about the last 15 years. We work really close with them and other carriers as a strong partnership. But we're excited to have an opportunity to present to you today. And I know you have a lot to go through. So I'll, I'll be kind of brief on this and just, you know, let us keep moving forward and introduce the primary team that you'd be working with in addition to Jesse and I.
So if you go to the next slide, please. So I gave my beef grand background here and, and I'm going to just have my team just say hello. So you can put a face or a voice with a name. I'm going to start with Louis Balaug.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Louis Balaug. Thanks, Jesse. I'm a Senior Benefits Consultant and I work in lockstep with Jesse and Jeff, just managing the overall service experience. It takes a small village to handle accounts like yours. And from a workload perspective, they only have six accounts. So again, I think that offers more dedication in terms of the time that we can offer. And also just overall working as a quarterback for your service experience. So hopefully to be as helpful as possible. And with that, there are several folks that I work with as well. So I might hand it off to Jeff or Lisa to introduce themselves.
Go ahead, Alisa.
Oh, my name's Alisa. I'm a Senior Account Manager at GCG. I've been with GCG for five years. And throughout those five years, I've worked primarily on the key accounts, primary service team. I've worn a lot of different hats. I've had about 10 years total in the industry. And prior to GCG, I worked on the client side.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm going to talk about Michael Catalano. Michael had a conflict this evening. Michael will serve as the financial analyst. Michael works closely, closely with all the financial and reporting aspects of a client engagement as also as a liaison between our independent, or I should say, your independent actuarial partner through Milliman. Michael had presented to Cindy and Roxanna and Carolyn and the prior teams throughout the engagement. He's a very, very seasoned analyst within GCG. Tiffany?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Tiffany Brown. I am the Specialty Benefits Manager. So I have just over 20 years in the industry. I was on the carrier side for National Life and Disability Carrier for just under 15 years. And I've been at GCG now for six years. And I service a resource to our employee benefits department. I maintain the non-medical carrier relationships here at a local level. And then I'm also available to assist the team handling complex renewals. And again, just making sure that we're, you have everything in your non-medical benefits package that was promised by the carriers.
Thank you, Tiffany. And last but not least, Gerardo?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Gerardo Chavez. I'm the Manager of Benefits Technology here at GCG Financial. I have been in the benefits technology space since 2012. More recently, I've been with GCG since, for the last five years. Typically, you'd be interacting with myself or anyone on my team with the overall implementation and overall updates of our in-house solutions. And I'm always here available to service any of our clients to ensure that if there's any modifications, any enhancements, or any new improvements that we can always flush out your experience, we're always here to help.
Wonderful. And just in the orange box, again, we have from our ERISA attorneys to our compliance teams, to our pharmacy consultants, we have a very, very deep bench. And that's been evident. It's a compliment from other districts when we kind of come back and say, what was the driving factor? And many have just said, you guys have a really, really deep bench. And so hopefully you feel the same way. The next slide. So this is at the core.
Jesse, can I, are we giving you too much info, enough info? We want to make sure we're covering the points that are important to you and not taking too long or missing things. If, if, just understand timing and what is important for you to understand.
We have a full agenda tonight, but certainly I know this is an area of specific interest of the Board. So why don't you proceed? And I'm sure we'll have plenty of questions as well.
Great. All right. Sorry about the interruption.
That's okay. We'll do a minute of slide. I know how these, we'll death by PowerPoint. But this is really at the core of what, what Jeff was talking about in our local vibe at GCG has been a core of creating an exceptional client experience. So I'm not going to read, be a PowerPoint reader for everybody tonight. But again, what we're looking at with, with health cares being, you know, in many organizations, the top two, three costs within, within an organization, we are constantly looking at innovative ways to improve quality, reduce, reduce cost, make sure that employees are valuing the true cost of what our benefit plans are offering. And really, our clients are at the center. And when you're hiring a top, you know, benefit advisor, we are looking at this ring as of these five pillars that we look through from our compliance, our vendor management, our cost management, our member communications, and then just population health management through data analytics or different wellness, well-being type programs. So next slide. And many times, you know, we hear from both private and public sector. And again, not getting too deep into the rabbit hole when people say, what are you talking about with cost management? What is GCG Alara looking at with their both private and public sectors and bringing innovative cost management solutions? So just at a really high level, because I don't know everybody's background in benefits, that we are constantly, this is just a high level from high-performance networks. You know, Blue Cross or many of the carriers have different norms of looking at networks that can provide higher-quality, lower-cost solutions, tiered-type networks. In the marketplace now, there's reference-based pricing, pricing plans as a percentage of Medicare versus the carriers' negotiated discounts. We also are looking at carve-out solutions. So when we start looking at, again, delving, we don't have Oak Parks, you know, claims information. But as we look through our different data analytics and different claims information, we're starting to look at other disease management programs like hypertension, you know, the silent killer, diabetes management. We're also looking at Centers of Excellence, making sure that our members are going to the providers of choice for specific procedures. We've also been really on the forefront of, of, in our marketplace here. I know there's only a couple of my competitors that have really are even close to being as advanced as we are as implementing direct contracting programs where we have relationships with certain providers to, on elective-type procedures to offer discounts in excess of 40% of what a carrier's negotiated fees are. As well as pharmacy benefits. I mean, we, we know that Big Pharma and pharmacy benefit managers is a very complex and costly, costly area of our benefit plans. So we are looking to best-in-market, best thought leaders in the pharmacy areas. We also do a very thorough job with our renewal and marketing analysis that when we're sitting down with an insurance committee, that we're building not across-table negotiations, that we're bringing roundtable discussions so that, you know, where the union contracts may come into play, that they're buying into this as a roundtable, how do we provide the best benefits, the highest quality and for the long term? We're not looking at, try not to look at renewals from year to year to get through. Where do we want to be in three to five years as well? Well-being initiatives, it used to be just biometric screenings or a wellness program or a benefit fair. But really, again, COVID has brought this in, you know, just with well-being for physical and mental health, financial health, it's gone well beyond just biometric screening and knowing your numbers. So we are well-versed in that, as well as consumer engagement, right? So not just using the open enrollment time, you know, where people take 20 minutes to make a health plan decision, but trying to get consumer engagement through different multi-channel tools out there. Next slide, please. So I, again, just barring, not going down a rabbit hole too much, but just when somebody said, can you tell me an example of what you've done with other organizations on some, and this was, this is a pharmacy, international pharmacy program that we brought to many of our private and public sector clients. And it just kind of shows as an example without getting into specifics that we'll be discussing with the district in the future. Whether or not the district wants to implement such a program is up to each, each, each of our clients. But this was an example of, of some of the districts, their logos on there that they've given us permission to talk about the program. In fact, many were references as one district did it and they would call other districts to say, are you doing this program? But these are, these are actual savings analysis from, from, from these, these organizations. And as I, as we kind of talked about, when we align ourselves, you know, when we look at our fees or what we're charging, we try to align ourselves to say, we have programs that are actually going to pay for the fees for our services that just through cost-saving win-win situations for, through different programs, that we can make it a real win-win for our clients, our members, especially our members first, then the district. And we're just aligning ourselves with our clients. Next slide. Jeff, do you want to just talk about direct contracting, please?
Sure. And Jesse, you've done a nice job kind of keeping, summarizing things. But another opportunity we've seen and we've really seen programs that can sit on top of a Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO plan or a United Healthcare PPO plan or another carrier for that matter. And really what it is, is it's a program that's created direct contracts with select groups of providers in the community focused around elective procedures. So things like, you know, emergency services, heart attacks, things where people need immediate care, these types of programs don't address. They're addressing programs where someone's making a selection to have a health procedure at some point in the future. And if that, members are willing to use these providers who have agreed to be part of this program, it drives cost savings for the member, it drives cost savings for the district, and it actually improves the member experience because they get out of having to manage paying any portion of their.
Jeff, you're breaking.
I think the point of these types of programs is we're going to really dig into what your programs look like, if not more. That's really where we're going to try and focus our energies around strategies, ideas, communications, find ways to make the better, or better for your members and a win-win.
Jeff, you're kind of breaking up your, your service there. So next slide. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, I got cut out for a second there. Sorry. Go ahead, Jess.
Okay. Gerardo, why don't you just, can you please just give a quick overview of some of the Ben Admin technology that we've, we've demoed for, for the RFP committee?
Good thing. Sure. So I had the opportunity to demo Employee Navigator to a few members of your district a couple of weeks ago. So at a very high level, Employee Navigator is one of the top benefits administration platforms in the country. It allows your administrative staff to centralize your district's benefits package onto a cloud-based system that is also easily accessible for your staff and faculty 24/7. Their staff members and faculty can view, manage, and update their benefits online via their normal computer or mobile device. Besides just the technology itself, one of the services with GCG is you also have access to my self-team, which is comprised of technology experts that have sort of come to the GCG from the benefits administrative world down to welfare and benefits administration. So our collective knowledge of benefits technology is always here at your disposable to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Thanks. The next slide, Gerardo, I think is, might be you or me. I'll, I'll take this. So again, employee resources and support. If you remember earlier in the presentation, some of those five, the five pillars of our customer experience, again, we're really focusing on the pre-enrollment with, with our members, right? People, I was, you know, people get really nervous about their benefits. They feel helpless. So we try to take that fear off. We're not going to win every, every battle. But we do try to make sure that at the end of the day, your district is absolutely thrilled with multi-channel communications. And Roxanna's team looks like rock stars. So we're building beautiful professionally-written benefit guides, webinars, recorded presentations. We'll talk about some decision support tools, right? The district or many organizations have two, three, four different health plans to choose from. And again, that can be confusing as well as nerve-wracking for folks to say, did I choose the right plan? So again, as we look for, for the pre-enrollment to post-enrollment support of helping telemedicine, right? It became COVID is really, most of our clients have had it for three to four years. And only we, you know, the utilization on it was awful. But I think as, you know, as, as we're learning and through the, you know, our quarantines and stay-at-home orders, that people are really looking at this. And again, post-claim support, second opinion services, print, video, calls, websites. So we're trying to really meet the member where they're, where they're wanting to meet with us. Next slide, please. So one of the other things that I applaud your, I applaud Roxanna's, HR teams love Alex powered by Jelly Vision. And I'll, Gerardo, why don't you give a 20-second overview of what Jelly Vision's all about and Alex?
Sure. So Alex is Jelly Vision's online avatar, which allows users to go on to an online link to educate themselves on their full benefits package. As you guys know, that benefits is very complicated just within the normal world, let alone people who are learning about benefits for the first time. So what Jelly Vision has developed, Alex, is it is allowed to create an interactive experience where employees can really get a deep dive on their benefit offerings, but also get a little bit more information in terms of cost estimators and get a better idea of what their benefits would look like and what benefits would work for them in a worst-case scenario. What Jelly Division uses is national with regional information regarding certain plans and networks to really give the employee a catered benefit recommendation that'll help them with their needs. help them with their needs.
In a, in a fun way, actually. So it's a, it's kind of a fun corny, but it, it really meets folks at different, different areas. What are the, okay, next slide, please. Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about Alara HR? I think you probably use it the most and.
Sure. One of the resources we provide is it's, it's an HR resource for HR compliance issues, lately COVID communications, policy handbook updates. And probably one of the big areas we see utilization is there's a learning portal. So as your team's required to go through any kind of training, maybe it's harassment training or management type training classes, our website can be utilized for that. You can upload team members that need to participate and it'll track their completions of your programs. And then again, it's available. We use it a lot on behalf of clients also when we get certain HR-related questions. They tend to be one of our go-tos as well as our own compliance team. But you can get on the phone with someone live and talk through issues you're dealing with and they'll send you in writing back responses that meet HR guidelines and requirements. It's similar to a SHRM website if anyone's utilized that before, but it has live, it has chat feature, and then it has learning courses.
Thank you. Next slide. Oh, there you go. Well, questions? Thank you. I, I, again, I, I would, it was a lot in a short amount of time. So we're, we're, if there's anything that we didn't present that you're itching to ask us.
Thank you, Jesse, for that presentation. Thanks to your team for joining us this evening. I'm sure we have board members with questions. So who wants to go first? Tom? Do you have questions?
I have probably a dozen questions, so. And there are, some of them are for you and some of them are for internal as it relates to this. So I'll try to start with the ones for you. I, I guess a question I would start with as a board member, what's your typical experience of board member, you know, in, in working with the board or the board members in, in what you do for a district?
It, it, Tom, it really varies by district. We have some boards that have multiple members join the insurance committee that are plugged in on a, usually, I mean, they're all different. All of our districts work differently. Most notably, our, our involved board members, we meet quarterly just to kind of give an overview of what we're doing, what we're planning. I guess I would pose that back for you. I mean, we're, we're typically engaged as much as our clients want us to be engaged. If that makes sense?
Okay. Sarah, do you want to put on a, you want to throttle me or how do you want to deal with this?
Tom, I was just going to let you run. So I, my guess is you have the most questions, so I thought maybe you could answer some that others might ask.
Okay. So I'm just going to hit, I'm going to hit a few and then I'll take a pause, okay? So I did see your list, you know, we provided some information of districts that you serve. Could you give me insight on, in two areas related to your customer base? One is, you know, in terms of those that are self, self-insured versus not self-insured. So I would add that aspect. And then the second part of that one is, you know, what is your business mix with, between schools and non-school, private, private business, et cetera?
Yeah. I'll keep going because these are all in my wheelhouse. The majority of the logos you saw there, you know, there's multiple advisors here at GCG Alara that are focused on different, different market segments. My market segment is probably 75/25 with school districts at 75% and, and private sector, that being the smaller percentage. But what we find is that really living in a silo of, of best, best thoughts, don't live in school districts, they don't live in municipalities, they don't live in the, the private sector. So we, we really blend best thoughts. I mean, so when we're looking at things, it's, it's, it's there. However, we're very cognizant of school districts' environments and, and the, you know, the, the union agreements and, and things of that nature. As far as the self-funded, that's my wheelhouse. Most, I think I have one or two fully insured school districts, but the majority of my school districts are 500-plus employee participation and are self-funded.
Okay, thank you. The next question is in terms of, of, it comes back to, again, the board involvement. What, what benchmarking or benchmarking type information would you provide to, to, to the board?
Great. Tom, these are all awesome questions and right, very, that's, that really delves into our partnership with Milliman. We talk about Milliman as being a household name, but actuaries aren't there. But if you have not heard of Milliman, they're kind of the granddaddy of all actuaries, both in the pension as well as in the actuarial arena, both from the carrier aspect, national carriers are buying their data, as well as their benchmarking, especially their benchmarking. Milliman has roughly 100 million members in their benchmarking database. I can tell you a large national name brand consulting, benefit consulting company had, that we've all recognized, has roughly one and a half to two million members in their benchmarking database. In the Chicagoland marketplace specifically, we had over 500 people that have benchmarked both public and private, not-for-profit. It's second to none. And be happy to share Milliman's medical index from you from 2019. We're in the midst of collecting our 2020 benchmarking data here in the coming months.
Hey, Jesse, can I jump on this a little?
Sure.
Because right in the middle of that. Tom, we're typically getting benchmark data and traditionally we start it in early March, we run it into, to early June, we do a seminar toward the end of June. The world we're all dealing with right now sort of pushed back our marketing of the Milliman benchmarking data in the Chicago area as, as well as national, as we've really been inundated with helping just manage everything going on. But we're capturing data both in the educational sector as well as private, public, various size entities. But we're getting granular down to deductibles, number of plans offered, what a copays, co-insurances look like, what are premiums, what are cost shares? And, and if you want to look specifically toward, you know, education sector above a certain size or in a certain area, we can really drill down and share that type of data with you. And we love getting into that, that granular, you know, as granular as your team wants to be looking at that kind of information.
Okay. I, I'll ask one more and then I'll yield the floor to my others. Just, I guess the question is, have you looked at our offerings and I guess what's your, what's your reaction as you look at what we do today? Is there anything that just jumps out at you?
Tommy, words? We, we were not, no, there, to answer your question, no, we weren't shared a lot of specifics about, about your plans, costs, contracts. It was just a general overview of the carriers that you use, number of plans.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Who else would like to ask some questions? Jackie or Gina? I can't really see everybody, so just jump in. Craig?
I'll ask, can you hear me?
Yeah.
The question, I have two. One had to do with the additional costs being the online, I forgot that slide that had the comparisons of the different vendors. And given our current climate and conditions, I wonder how we would, how much we would have to avail ourselves of that service as an add-on. And then the second question just has to do with, when you talked about your roundtable approach, as someone that's been involved with our contract negotiations, how do you see the, in a self-funded district, the interest of the district aligning and I guess working with the, the interests of the various bargaining units?
It's education. Self-funded is really, right, is, is, is understanding. I, I've not met with your insurance committee to know what their understanding is of what's driving cost, what, what I don't have, I have not seen, I've not been shared your, you know, your union agreements in force to see what triggers plan design coming, you know, if we're looking at, at plan design or, you know, when budget increases, it's easy to cost shift to higher deductibles and out-of-pockets. That's last resort. So that's why we're trying to look at innovative ways to not have to cost share back on those. But in the roundtable discussions is making sure that members can see what is driving our cost in a self-funded, in a well-run self-funded plan, right? Claims cost typically makes up about 85 to 90% of the budget. And the fixed cost is, you know, for administering the plan, reinsurance, maybe on the self-funded HMO, your capitation fees. But a lot of times it's, it's helping, it's starting at the basics, making sure is everybody, what is driving cost in, in our, in our programs? How are we addressing those costs before, you know, we, we would have to make any type of plan design changes? What are we looking to address? You know, again, is it pharmacy that's really driving cost? Is it certain spouses? Is it, you know, that are driving it? So it's really trying to understand our plans and making sure the committee and the union so that, that the board is well-versed to the community and constituents to say, this is what we're recommending and this is why.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Jesse, could you answer about Alex? I think that was the first part of the question that Dr. Moore had.
I might have.
Cost for Alex, the virtual assistant?
Oh, we, we agreed to, to split the cost of Alex 50/50 with the district. So if the district finds value in it, that people, that members are using it and, you know, it's, it's one thing to have one of the nation's coolest avatars talking about the specifics of our insurance plan, but if three people are using it, you know, the cost per use gets, gets quite extensive. So we, we've agreed that if you find value in it and we're getting utilization and driving it, we'll, we'll be right there with you.
Is that your typical agreement with districts splitting the cost 50/50?
No. No, that was, that was Roxanna. So she's, that was Roxanna calling me out and saying what, you know, what. But we, what we also asked to do those is on the pharmacy, if we can look at pharmacy drivers, I said that we would pick up the fixed cost of that, but that in looking at, if we bring in a, in the international pharmacy, we typically charge our districts a percentage of the savings. So those programs are really at no cost. And if they, if you don't implement it, there's no cost to you. If you do implement it and there is savings, that our fee would be 30% of the savings. So if you save a dollar, you, that 30 cents would come to us to, it's really to offset the cost of Alex.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ralph or Matt?
That's a great question.
All right.
Jackie actually asked a question I was going to ask, so I can be quiet for a change.
Craig, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions specifically relative to, you know, the selection of the vendor here. I do have some questions for, you know, how we're making this decision. And I, I wanted to wait till we sort of got through this discussion about with, you know, the selection first.
Gina? Do you have any, or Tom, did you have any more for the, for the team?
Tell me actually ask a question about the self-insured versus a non-self-insured makeup, and that was, I was curious about that, so.
I'm, I'm fine. Thank you, Sarah. I, you know.
Okay. Great, thanks. I, so I actually have one question. So, you know, given the current pandemic, everyone is very concerned about their health insurance and making sure that they have continuity. What is the transition going to look like for our employees? Are they going to, what's that welcome sort of look like? How do you roll it out to them? Because I want to make sure that there's this little confusion or distress or anxiety around this for them as possible.
Jeff, do you want to, otherwise I.
Sure. And, and I hope I'm understanding the question, like how, how will this impact your employees? It really won't. Their, their plans will stay the same, Blue Cross stays the same. Predominantly, your team's interactions with your consultant broker would change to, to our team. Once you finalize the process and give us authorization, we'll gather most of the data we need directly from your carriers. It's, it's not a heavy lift on you to, to share a lot of data, other than we want to understand your, you know, union arrangements and things like that, which needs to come from you versus the carriers. But from your employees' perspective, it, it should be a completely seamless process. If you're giving them direct access to someone at Gallagher, we would figure out how to manage that notification and get information in front of your, your members in order, if they need our contact information.
Great, thank you. All right. Now I believe that there are additional questions for the administration on this. Is that right, Craig?
Yeah, I, I had one. I guess I just wanted to start with, you know, I, I think it's, it's really good that we've gone through this process. And as far as, you know, as far as I've seen, you know, we, we've made a good choice here in terms of a, a carrier with all the right, or a broker with all the right kind of capability. So that's good. But, you know, this has been kind of a hot button for us for quite a while. This broker, the advice that they give us and how they help us, they're helping us with our second largest spend across here. They're helping us with a point that's key to our, our union negotiations in terms of helping us and providing us advice and, and input on, on different types of options. And we're also dealing with an area, you know, that, that from my perspective is, is very strategic. So my question or, or my ask is, and we've even heard tonight, you know, the board is involved in other places. And my question is really, we ran this process, we get, you know, we get a, we, we get a heads up about it two days ago when we get the agenda, we're asked to vote on it tonight. Doesn't feel very strategic to me. We're not involved with the choice and I'd like us to, to think about how we make it more strategic to us rather than what feels very, you know, come to us and provide the, the last vendor and, you know, give us your approval. So I, I'm disappointed from that standpoint. So that's more of a comment than a question, Sarah.
Can I, can I just give, I'm sorry, Sarah, can I just give one comment on kind of the strategic side? And I mentioned earlier, I, I sit on Blue Cross's producer advisory council. Each year, and it's, it's typically been in mid-June, we have a meeting with them where they share data analytics on our specific book of business with them. And they look at strictly our key accounts, which are groups above 150 that are experience-rated. And Blue Cross's general block of business has been running at roughly a 5% annualized trend rate, which is like 5% annualized year-over-year inflation. Our book of. Our book of key account business with Blue Cross was a one-point-six percent annualized trend. So some of it's probably luck, it's the right clients, but we, I, I think, you know, long-term, having the chance to work together, you'll find us very strategic, strong communicators and strong educators of your membership. I know that doesn't really answer your question and the timing, but I thought that was just important to, to share.
Thanks. I mean, everything I've heard tonight here is that, that you guys answer the questions in ways I was very comfortable with. Um, I, I, I just think from my perspective, um, the board needs to be more involved here. And I, Mike, under, I, I don't know if this is the right time to discuss with the board and with the administration as to why not, but, um, uh, you know, no time like the present.
To that, the board in Oak Park, I will say, I, I heard, uh, Jeff say that they've, and, uh, Jesse said they've worked with many boards historically in Oak Park. The board has not been a part of the RFP process. And so we went through the process with the, um, benefits committee, which is a process we've always used. We, uh, we tried to get the board the contractual information as soon as possible, but there's also the, the back and forth between our attorney and their attorney to make sure that things were straight. But historically here, at least, the board has not been involved. If that is a direction that the board wants to go moving forward, then I would suggest that administration and the board have an opportunity to discuss that.
Craig, what I think I hear you saying is, um, why hasn't a board member sat on the insurance committee? Is, is that fair?
That, that, that would be, that could be fair. Why, why hasn't a board member sat on the insurance committee? And it's not just the RFP, Joelyn, it's, it's the entire sort of strategic process of how we interface with benefits and this cost. And, and I don't want to get into, you know, I, I do not want to get into procedural issues, but I do think that some of these are strategic in, in how we do things. And I'm looking for how we get that involvement in a constructive way.
I agree. And, and I'm just suggesting that maybe we have that discussion because there may be other, uh, processes too, that the board feels they should be more engaged in.
Sounds like that might be a future agenda item.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you very much. This was very informative.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for inviting us and, and we will talk to you soon.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item under finance is discussion on issuers of debt certificates to pay for capital projects. This, excuse me, this item is in compliance with strategic plan priority four and district policy four calling forty. This item is for discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Sidore.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, tonight what we're going to do is we're going to discuss some of the, um, debt, what we talked about was debt certificates, um, that we are specifically talking about and the issuance of future, um, what it has on future budgets and long-term projected, um, move that on me. Can you move it back down?
Excuse me, Cindy?
Yes.
If I am, I'm just trying to make sure I know who's joining you.
I, I, yes.
Elizabeth Hennessy and Dr. Robert Grossi.
Correct, correct. Um, so this is just, you know, a long-term projected financial condition of the district, uh, based on the current market conditions and also due to COVID-19, um, and some of the projects we're working on, we were looking at, um, possibly issuing debt certificates. So this is a discussion we would like to have with the board. So if you could go to the presentation, please. We're going to start off with Dr. Rob Grossi, uh, starting to present from Crystal Financial.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, if you turn to slide two, please. So, um, obviously nobody in, uh, in the country anticipated COVID-19 and certainly nobody anticipated, uh, how it may impact the financial condition of school districts in Illinois. Uh, and certainly, um, a lot of school districts were in the process of some major financial decisions. So throughout the state, uh, many school districts are revisiting and re-examining some major decisions, primarily collective bargaining agreements that have not been, uh, fully resolved yet and major capital projects, just to, just to consider it under the new lens of some potentially challenging times financially. And school districts are coming up with different conclusions based on their financial condition. So at the last meeting, uh, the administration posted to the board three options, which you see in front of you. And the primary, uh, option that was discussed was whether to continue with the capital project. And it was concluded that the Board of Education desired to move forward with phase one of the capital project. And that was, again, and that was pretty much primarily the end of the discussion. But within the discussion, there was conversation around, uh, possibly issuing debt certificates to defer some of the costs out to future years. And, um, although that was brought up in the conversation, that was never vetted all the way through the Board of Education. So I, I, I view this conversation as a continuation of the conversation at the last meeting. The board elected to move forward, which was a decision point as, uh, that's a new decision point created by the COVID-19 crisis. And the second decision point, which there are positives and negatives to, is does a district want to move forward to issue debt certificates to defer a portion of the costs to future years? The primary reason, and, and there's reasons for and against that, but the primary reason to issue debt certificates would be to give the district optionality. What I mean by that is that if we push the cost of a portion of the projects out beyond the next five years, then the district will have more time to adjust to the impact of a financial crisis, either by being able to gradually make reductions in its operations or by waiting for a economic turnaround, if that's going to happen at some point in time over the next decade. So that, that's the optionality on one side. The optionality on the other side is that if the district did do debt certificates, um, I would recommend that they would set up the debt certificates in a way that the, they could be called in a seven-to-ten-year period, which means that if in the event things do not ferret out negatively, which would be good, then the district would have an option in year seven through year ten, somewhere around that range, to call the bonds and pay them off. And by doing that, they would stop the payments of interest on the borrowing. So, so the, 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 the negative is that you do absorb cost of issuance, you do absorb in, uh, interest or, uh, costs. The positive is that it gives the district optionality to adjust to, uh, what's going on with the COVID-19 crisis. So today's meeting is to kind of talk about the, um, how the district would impact the school districts. And Elizabeth's going to, uh, discuss the next slide on the estimated costs related to various borrowing options.
Good evening. Um, the chart that you see in front of you is a summary of a number of options that we have worked on for the district for the issuance of debt certificates. Debt certificates are paid from the district's operating funds, so there's no separate tax levy, no separate tax increase associated with those debt certificates. The district has to fit the payments within their budget. These options are for twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and forty million, paid over ten, fifteen, and twenty years. And they're conservative estimates. The debt payments are level, uh, like a mortgage. And so if we look at the twenty-year fifteen, or twenty million, fifteen-year debt certificate, the all-in true interest cost currently estimated is two-point-two-one percent. That includes, um, a twenty-five basis points or a point, point-two-five percent cushion, uh, to, given the volatility, uh, of the bond market right now. And I'll talk about that in a minute. The total interest cost over the fifteen-year life of the bonds is about three-point-four million and the annual payment of principal and interest is about one-point-six million. So that would be the amount the district would need to work into its budget to re, uh, in its O and M budget to repay the debt certificates. The bond market has been extremely volatile as the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic becomes realized. We hit an all-time low in interest rates on March ninth. Then interest rates on municipal bonds went up a full two percent or two-hundred basis points as that market detached from the U.S. Treasury market, which it typically follows. The next week, rates came down by one-point-five percent, then up by point-seven-five percent, down by point-six-five. And it's like an oscillating bouncing ball now. It's, it, the volatility in the municipal market has gotten to be less. Rates have come down again this week, but what's happened post a kind of realization is of, of the effects of the COVID-19 are impacts on various states and what states are best prepared to handle that. And Illinois is not, uh, one of them. You've seen them state in the news. Fitch downgraded the state. All three rating agencies, Moody's, Standard, and Poor's, and Fitch have the state on negative outlook. They are currently at the lowest investment-grade bond rating, and one more step down would be into non-investment-grade territory. So there's a lot of pressure, a lot of eyes are on Springfield right now, waiting to see what the six-month budget will be going forward. So because of those factors, what's happened is interest rates on even really strongly rated issuers like the school district with a triple-A district, triple-A bond rating have spread out. So that is probably worth between twenty and thirty basis points additional spread, uh, above the normal Illinois spread to that triple-A MMD index. That index represents the largest, most highly rated states in the nation. So there's just some comments on the interest rate market. Rates have come down, uh, again this week, and we think the Fed will certainly keep them low, rates low, uh, into the future. So for that reason, it is a good time to borrow. Um, and the strongest, uh, credits are those that are more property tax-funded and less state-funded and school districts who are more reliant on property taxes versus cities and states that are reliant on sales tax and income tax. So of all the types of issuers, you are, uh, one of the most attractive, um, but we still have the Illinois impact to deal with. So, you know, right now, we're estimating two-point-two-one percent conservatively, um, based on the cushion that would actually be under two percent. So, um, we'll just, we'll see how, uh, interest rates move going forward, but by and large, it's a very good time to borrow, to lock in a low cost, um, for capital financing.
If you go to the next slide, please? So Cindy and Alyssa, uh, put together, uh, some projections all about the 2030 based on various scenarios. Um, I guess to start with the pre, pre-COVID-19 projections, uh, which included, uh, the four million dollars, which represents what the district historically spends on average on operating expenditures and the ten ma, uh, ten-year maintenance plan, estimated costs, which I, I understand you'll be, uh, talking about in, in the future. Um, and the, uh, all the projections other than that are post-COVID. And within the projections, um, the assumptions assume that there will be a property tax freeze, but at least as of now, a property tax freeze isn't that relevant because CPI, CPI is trending close to zero anyway. So, uh, you may get a property tax freeze, even if the state doesn't enact legislation accordingly. Um, the other assumption is that the, the property tax relief grant, part of your evidence-based funding base, which is about three-point-seven million dollars, will go away beginning next year. And also in the projections are that the district's going to experience a one percent decline in tax collections due to non-payments because of, uh, people being unemployed, et cetera. Uh, in addition to that, there's some modest decreases in state revenues, interest earnings, and corporate personal property taxes. So essentially, um, I, I, I mean, the, the, the picture, uh, let's not focus on the red line yet, but the, but the picture is essentially the same. If the district borrows to pay for a portion, and in this example, it's twenty million dollars. If they borrow to pay for a portion of the capital projects, their fund balances over the next few years will be higher. You can't see the, the, uh, purple, but it's hidden behind the first couple of red dots. Um, but the, um, the, the first several years, fund balances will be higher and then fund balances will start to gravitate below if you didn't issue the debt certificates because there'll be some interest costs associated with that. So that's where the optionality comes in. And again, um, if in fact the district is in a situation where their fund balances remain stable, uh, for whatever reason, then, um, then the district has, again, we would, it would, should be structured so that in a seven-to-ten-year period, it could pay off the debt, just a principal amount, just like you're paying off your mortgage, um, and not have to worry about the interest costs associated with it. And then the red line is adding in project two, uh, which would show that the di, district would run into negative fund balances beginning in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. If you turn to the next slide. This is just another example, but is, this one uses a thirty-million-dollar fifteen-year scenario. So it, it raises beginning fund balances in the first few years by around ten million dollars. And, uh, because interest costs in aggregate will be a little bit higher, um, because it's thirty million instead of twenty million, the, uh, the, the long-term fund balances will be a bit lower. Next slide, please? And then this is a forty-million scenario, same type of, um, directional movement in the, in the, the lines. Next slide, please? Uh, so Cindy is going to take over us from here.
Hello. So what we were looking at is we were trying to, uh, we're going to ask the board to borrow twenty million for fifteen years. And the reason we were looking at that, we looked at what was going to be best to fit our budget and also with repayments and, uh, completing some of the projects and also staying within the mid-range, not asking for too much, but also, again, trying to finish off some of the projects and seeing where we land with COVID-19 to see that, um, our, our balances were okay with all of our fund balances. Uh, right now, we're at historical low interest rates and our, our district at this point in time is very healthy. So this would be a good time to go out and, and receive some debt certificates, just to have some debts too, to be able to pay off some stuff. And then you look at the, uh, can, you know, it would be able to help us continue to do, uh, fund project one during this pandemic and also preserve our fund balances. Next slide, please? We were, we always look at how to improve our financial conditions. The ones that we're really talking about here is, um, the first one, the very first one. This is a stretch of a ten-year maintenance plan beyond ten years. Uh, so if the plan had to go past ten years, this would also help us be able to go to that and be able to also finish some of these projects that need to be done. The rest of this really pertains to what we're always looking at to help improve our financial condition while we're working on the budget. Next slide, please? This one here is really the critical factor. Because of COVID-19, we really do not know where we're going to land and what our stability is. So we looked at, um, the real estate tax collections, uh, the fact of when will we receive the distributions and how many appeals will there be? We still receive appeals all the way back from nineteen ninety-nine. Um, will there be a property tax freeze? We did build in a year worth of property tax freeze in our budget, um, or in our five-year projection. Uh, for evidence-based funding, we've done a best-case scenario, a mid-case, a mid, uh, scenario, and also a, a worst-case scenario. So we play all three of these when we're working on our five-year projection. And right now, what we're looking at is the mid, um, case scenario. So for the evidence-based funding, there may be some cuts and it may go back to, uh, two thousand seventeen, we may roll back to then. So for the evidence based funding, there may be some cuts and it may go back to two thousand seventeen, we may roll back to them. But I've heard discussions of paybacks. We've heard discussion of, we may have to pay back the property tax relief grant that we had received. Now, I'm not saying this is happening, I'm just saying that in many of the discussions I've had. So we've just built different scenarios when we're building this in. We have not, we have not built into our scenarios that we would be paying back the property tax relief grant. Late categorical payments, we're looking that they'll be late, the loss will be lower. We know that for next year, we've built in two payments that we should be receiving. There could be the possibility of the pension cost shift that we may see coming down the pike. And then, of course, future construction projects and building that in our budgets and see where that that's. Next slide, please. So our, so our next step, besides having a discussion here with the board, what we're actually looking at is if the board decides to move forward with the debt certificates. This is the finance team that we would like to go with, based on the long term they've had with the district and the experience with the school. So that is the end of this presentation. Are there any questions? And I'm sure there's many.
I know people have questions.
It's what I'm waiting for. I was like, wow, this is, I could silence.
Sarah, I'll start with a couple of questions, but I I'd really like to hear other questions from the board before I I go too far. Cindy, one more time, you know, what what exactly why do you feel we need to borrow right now? I don't mean dust, you you're you're proposing we borrow right now. Why do you feel that's important for us to do now?
Well, I feel, the reason I feel that Craig is because, one, we have COVID nineteen. We are starting, we are starting this project one. Plus also two, we have discussed, or there has been discussions in the past about the ten year maintenance, I would call it capital maintenance that will be happening and funding for that. Plus also giving us a chance to see where where do we land with COVID nineteen? Being a tier four school, we have more of an opportunity that we would lose more of our funding. So that that is one thing we're trying to take into account. By going with the twenty million, it would, it would be able to cover the start of project one. And then possibly also start some of the projects for the ten year maintenance and cover that. And still feel that we'll be able to recover after we come back from COVID nineteen and see exactly where where is the school district financially.
So let me ask just some clarifying questions. So the project one and the ten year capital plan for maintenance as it's constructed right now. That's not new information, right? We've known that for a while, correct?
Correct.
And and so the real new thing in this mix for you is COVID nineteen.
Correct.
And in the context of COVID nineteen. Most of what you've thrown out there is assumption or speculation. I don't mean that to say that a bad word because you're just trying to plan.
No, right.
But we don't know anything relative to what might happen. You're just concerned and because you're concerned, you'd like us to borrow so that we don't deplete our fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is exactly correct.
Okay, I I will hold my other thoughts until after other board members have talked.
Who would like to go next?
I'll jump in, Sarah. It's Tom. And I'm, I'll just with a couple of quick questions and then I'll yield as well. The the one that I didn't quite understand related to the presentation, Cindy. Is I think on the slide before the one being shown, where you talked about actually paying back the property tax relief grant. And and can you help me? Are you talking about basically giving them back money we have already received and spent? Or are you talking about future potential revenue being lost?
No, I'm talking about what we've already received. I I asked that, that's a great question, Tom, because that is one that I asked. We were in a Ed Red meeting and I had heard this, so I actually reached out to ask, you know, I, the exact question you just asked. And they said, no, it's a possibility that you would have to pay back what you have received. Because it would bring you back to where you were in two thousand seventeen. And I also asked the question, well, wait a minute, we also had to abate money back. So I'm assuming that the abatement would also be taken off of that. Because we would lose, we would lose a lot of money by paying this back. Now, this again is one of those situations where they said, you know, it it's a speculation, just like Craig said.
But it's. Cindy, can I jump, can I jump in on this? It's Martyry.
Yeah, sure.
That's not happening. What you're describing is not going to happen.
Okay.
It's just not going to happen.
Okay.
Well, so what is likely to happen if the state finances continue to go as currently projected? Which is strongly negative for the next two years. Is that tier three and tier four districts like us will be rolled back to our base funding minimum as they existed when the EBF was first implemented in FY twenty eighteen. Meaning whatever state grant totals we'd gotten through twenty seventeen would be our new BFM. So we would lose as a revenue going forward. All of the property tax relief grant that's built into our new higher BFM.
Okay.
But we would simply go back to the old one. I have literally heard no discussion at ISB or with a legislator or with the governor's office of clawing back money that was dispersed to school districts previously.
Well, that's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that because that was, that like I said, that is, these are the conversations that are out there, Ralph. So that is, you know, some of them that we have to play into this scenario, we feel we have to bring them to.
The the context where you heard it at Ed Red. And and that that's enough of a context to discredit it.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Ralph.
Cindy, you were still answering the question, I believe. Did you have more you wanted to add?
Um, I think, I think Tom was talking about the property tax relief grant. That was the one he was asking if we had to pay it back. And that was the one I said that Ed Redhead did, that's what was said during that, and I did ask those questions. And those were the answers they gave us or gave me.
Tom, Tom, did you have more questions?
Yeah, I mean, I had a bunch more. I'm just looking through, I have a bunch I want to just talk to, but I'm just looking specifically for questions based on the presentation. I I guess the the other question I'd like to better understand is more in line with the ten year maintenance plan. Because Craig Craig asked the question, you know, what was old news, what was new news? And, um, you know, I I think the response was, well, project one has been in the works for a while, that information. The ten year maintenance plan. And information that was shared with us in the last, I don't know, seems like the last three to six months. Was news to the board. So I guess the question is, was that not news to the district?
So Tom, this is Mike Carriach Show. I would say that one of the things that Cindy and I have done, I would say in the last six months is really try to get the the ten year plan in a format where we were comfortable with what we were actually saying. If you recall, we've been, we've been working our way through that. And I've been, we've, we've, in the past, had just put a flat dollar amount of, you know, before it was like three point five million, three point two, three point five million a year for maintenance. And then I'd said, probably six months ago, we decided we would go with more like a four, four million dollars a year. When, when I went through and I I started tallying up all of the things that really updated.
Mike, we, you got, you're broken there.
Okay, I'm glad, I thought it was me.
Hello, am I back?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We don't know.
When, when we, we came to the board several months ago with our updated ten year plan. We tried to get a realistic plan of what it would cost us. And whereas before the plan was simply, we took whatever it was we could afford to do. In an essence, that was our ten year plan. So we really didn't have a ten year plan that was built into the capital, into the the budget, into the the budget projections. So I'd say within the last three to six months, Cindy and I have gotten together. And I've tried to put the real numbers that we think we're going to spend. Now, the the choice we always have is to go back to the way things were, which is, this is our budget. We will spend what is in our budget, I mean, just like in your house, right? If you can't afford to do something, you push it off, you don't do it. So that is absolutely an option. So I I would agree that this is, it's always been a different philosophy than when I I started looking at the ten year plan. The philosophy was you had a flat amount and that's what you spent. I tried to say, what do we really need to do? And then we can make it, the board can help us make the decision about whether we do it or we push it off and just try to stretch it out further. So I would agree, I think that's, that's, I won't call it new news, but I think it's the first time we really brought it and and put some dollar amounts on it.
And and I would say, and I'll yield after this, I would also say that you also, I mean, I guess the other question I have is you could say, one, here's, here's a budget, okay? The second, you know, you're two different options, but somewhere in there is what is, what is, what is standard? What's normal, right? What what is needed for the amount of square footage and such like that to maintain adequately? There are standards out there to to do. And where are we versus those standards? Are we, are we truly under or over, you know, spending in this bucket?
Yeah, we're truly under by quite a bit.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
And the other is, there's, there's parts to this building that have to be taken care of. And I think that part of it is because we've dealt with a, they get part of the levy each year, which goes along with some of the maintenance. But I think some of these maintenance projects that need to be fixed are more costly than those levy amounts they've been allotted. So that's what we're looking at, too.
Can I, can I ask a follow up question to Tom's line of questioning here?
Sure, sure.
So, and and actually this ties into Craig's, too. The only part that confused me in the presentation was the statement that some of the debt would be utilized to cover the project one costs. I think my understanding is the project one costs are all coming from reserves, period, end of story. And we've budgeted for that. However, we may need to incur debt certificates to cover the cost of the ongoing capital maintenance needs from our rolling five and ten year plan. And that would be a rational utilization of debt for a couple of reasons. Number one, your capital maintenance and improvement items have a long term life. Number two, they are traditionally financed with debt. Number three, the fund balance is supposed to be targeted primarily to covering the new, the quote unquote, new improvements to the school that are going to be done in accordance with whatever gets approved of the Imagine Plan going forward. So, and number four, it it's really low cost right now to incur the debt and preserve the fund balance for other needs or covering for the COVID crisis. So my understanding of the debt service was just putting us on a rational basis of issuing debt to cover ongoing maintenance needs, which is the standard operating financing procedure of a well operated school district. And it's one that comes at no additional la- levy cost for taxpayers, correct?
Correct, that that is correct, except one thing, Ralph, you you can't, so if we used in our scenario twenty million over fifteen years. That you actually have to spend that, the money within a three year span. It can't be spread out over fifteen years. It's not like taking, you know, going out and taking a loan for your house and saying, I'm going to do this bit by bit and I'll just use it. They actually, we actually have to use it over three years.
So if you use it over the three year period, if you use the debt service, then Cindy, what you're saying is you have to use it to replace a portion of the reserve that we were planning on spending down. And then the reserve, dollar for dollar, gets transferred over to a a debt repayment fund or segregated account, whatever, to cover the repayment of the bonds. But it, because money is fungible, we're, we're saying we're using the debt proceeds. But the the net effect of the transaction is as I outlined it. We're really incurring the debt so that we have the capacity to actually make the ten year capital improvements we would need to make.
Yes.
Ralph, the other, the other side of the story, which we we didn't get our timing right, because I wasn't quite ready for it, is we are, I'm coming to you at the regular board meeting and giving you the news on the project one costs, which are not in line with what was budgeted. So we're going to give the board an option to look at what scope needs to be eliminated in order to stay within the thirty two point six million that was allocated. Or basically tell you what it is that we need to actually do the project with the scope that was basically promised with project one. So that is another piece of this puzzle that the board has not been, you know, we haven't really brought that to the board yet. And my apologies for that, I've just, I wasn't prepared to to do that for this meeting.
But I do want to say, Mike, we, several meetings ago, we did say to the board that there were some things that would have to be cut because of the pricing. Because when we set the price for project one. We we weren't, we knew that prices would change. We talked about the need for the survey and some other things and and maybe not having those. But then also additionally reducing some costs, because in one of your presentations, you showed those things that had to happen. And those things that could potentially raise the cost. So I I don't want to, while we, we don't have these final numbers finally done that we will present Thursday. I just don't want to send the message that we haven't been messaging this was coming.
Right.
So I guess I'll wait to see if, I I have some other comments, I want to, I guess I want to build on Ralph's. So Sarah, can I go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. I think Ralph brings up some really good points about about the normal way in which we should be funding things. And given a lot of thought to to this and, you know, between the last meeting and this meeting. I guess, you know, I I fundamentally feel, you know, yes, this is a very good time to borrow. And I actually fundamentally feel as a district, we should have a level of borrowing to invest in things that we are buying now that are going to be used for several years forward. That 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 should be part of our normal process with the ten year plan and investments. And and now's a great time to do it. But, you know, as I thought about, what are the things I'd be willing to borrow for? Cindy has put out there, well, let's borrow to, as a risk mitigation option against COVID issues or other issues that have to do with, you know, even project one being more expensive. That's one reason we could borrow. Another reason we could borrow is to offset real reasons that impact us from COVID nineteen. I mean, real things that happen, once, once they've happened, we could borrow to cover that. Because we have plenty of fund balance to cover periods of time.
Right.
And I guess the third is we could borrow to cover, you know, projects which we haven't yet approved and capital things that we haven't yet costed. Like maybe spending more on the building than we planned for the, you know, to to ma- to make up for years of of maintenance issues. Or maybe spending something additional on project one that we haven't. But we don't have those in front of us yet, but those are way, those are things we could borrow. And and of those three things, three reasons to borrow, the one I really, I don't want to borrow for. to borrow for is to cover project one or to cover risks that haven't occurred so that we maintain our fund balance. That, that I don't want, I don't want to do. For the other two cases, I'm much more open to borrowing, but I don't have those things on the table in front of us right now.
Right. And, and, and you know what, Craig? This is, you know, uh, with my, with Mike talking about the, what we need to do and, um, the 10 year maintenance, this was actually a discussion him and I were having well before COVID-19, uh, about how to cover this, because that was part of the, that's what we were looking at is the fact that, uh, some of the projects that need to be done, we need to look at this and say, these, these projects need to be done. The longer you let them sit, that means the longer it, it, you know, it may cost us more in the end, instead of trying to address them. So that was the initial, oh, boy, we were looking, I think, back in probably February and starting to look at, should we issue some debt certificates for this? Uh, so I, I agree with that. I agree with that a hundred percent. And I realized that, you know, project one is really for, you know, supposed to spend down our fund balance. And that's, that's what we're looking at. It's just at this point of saying, you know, by the next two, three years, we should know where we're standing. I could see that we would use some of that, but again, too, as Ralph pointed out too, it would more or less be you're going against one fund to use that, to use this, and but it would also be going back too, because we're paying down the fund balance on it. So it wouldn't have been used really in the end for project one.
Right. So we're going to use fund balance to pay project one and part of project two, which will be paid for in other ways as well.
Uh huh.
And then it puts our curve in a point where additional money that we need to borrow or impacts that come from the state hit that line in a way that we should be looking at debt to cover, because that's a good thing to do at this point.
Yes.
My point is, I don't think we're there yet. We haven't seen those things. Those things are not, have not been voted on or agreed to by us. So I think the discussion of the debt certificate, while informative and useful at this, at this point is, is premature, um, to, to think that that would be the right direction until those things become a little bit more material. Um, I did have a question.
Excuse me, before you ask your question, could you just give a little more context to your point two of covering real things related to COVID that we don't know what they are yet?
Well, my, my point is, we, we have a lot of speculation that collections could be lower, that, uh, we could lose the, uh, we could lose the relief grant money going forward. We could get hit with a, a property tax freeze. And, and maybe some of these things are going to happen, because we think that, we know the condition of the state, we know the issues, and these are all risks. But I, there's no sense in borrowing now for risks that are there, because none of them have actually happened. And there's no reason we can, from my perspective, there's no reason we can't allow them to happen and understand what they are and then borrow, because we have a big fund balance. We actually have a cushion that can, that gives us that time to watch these things happen before we have to ask.
Can I, um?
And I just think our taxpayers would be much happier that way to, to know, you know, why.
Can I jump in, Craig?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep blabbing on, so.
I know. Well, you know what? You guys, you, you guys tend to do that sometimes because it's your area and you love it. And so I get it totally, so no worries. Um, I just wanted to jump in here, because you, you were saying what I was, what I was hoping to get across tonight, was that I don't think that we have all the information that we need to be making this kind of decision just yet. First of all, we don't, there's, there are some unknowns that we will know, um, and we'll have a greater picture of it in time, and we don't have those yet. And then what also concerned me was, I know Ja, um, Dr. Pruitt Adams said that she was, that you guys have somewhat been prepping us for this, but although there's been a conversation, this feels wholly like another piece because of what we're in right now. And, um, when, um, Mike said that he, um, that there was just, there was enough said tonight, in addition to where, the way I was already concerned, that we don't have enough information yet, that we, this is, this would be a premature decision at this point.
And I also have a concern because we. We weren't asking you to make a decision at this point. This was just for discussion.
Yeah.
We can go back.
And the other piece is, we just had a conversation about not issuing debt around this project one. So for project one to be in there, when we just had a conversation about not having any debt with this feels, and, and considering our fund balances, it feels, um, out of integrity in some way that we are, it's just, I'm, I'm considering.
I'm sorry, I feel compelled, I'm sorry, to say, we, we came back with a discussion about going to debt, because at the last board meeting, uh, as, when we had the discussion about project one and being totally funded at this point out of the fund balance, we heard from the board an interest in knowing what debt would look like. And so that's why we came back today with a presentation about possibly going to debt.
Thank you. I just didn't, I, when we had that conversation, what I heard was that might be something that we would look at down the road. It did not seem like an immediate request for that. So I heard it differently, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Can I jump in?
Sure, Tom.
Okay. So, and, and I'll be brief, because I, um, I, and I'll kind of echo and support some of the things that have just been said, in part by Gina and by, by Craig. First of all, I totally agree that we should not borrow a penny for project one, here. What, what kind of made, you know, I, I also believe that as a school district, having debt as part, a, a, an amount of debt as part of our normal operating, i, is in, in my mind, we need to, to equilibrate towards that at the right time. I think we've, we've, we've gotten out of, we have no debt, which is in some ways wonderful. We've absorbed all the expenditures, so we're spending just as much. But in doing so, in my opinion, we've robbed from money that needs to be spent on our facilities. So I do believe we need to get debt. I do, I agree, we also are somewhat, you know, we don't have the information. What's tipped my mind is, is this concern about the 10 year plan. And so I await that information where we can be more specific in that, um, to, to determine there. And I would also say that any debt we have, um, you know, again, it, it shouldn't cost the taxpayers money, uh, and it shouldn't come out of our fund balance. Uh, you know, it's, we've got to self-absorb it. So those are my sentiments.
Yeah, this is Marty Terry. I'm, I'm a ditto on all that.
Jackie, did you want to, did you have any questions or comments?
I just, um, given what I just heard, um, I asked the question before, but the, the comment that I have is, um, it does feel a little bit like a rabbit hole a bit, because this, um, was, this whole conversation or presentation, uh, was predicated by one of the, uh, options that was presented to us when we were talking about our, um, uh, you know, what could potentially happen, given, um, the, the current COVID-19 situation. So, uh, I know we're saying now, we, you know, we never said anything about project one, but, uh, that, I understand why this has come forward the way it has, and I, I think it's good that we're clarifying that. Uh, but we did talk about it in relation to, um, what it might look like to take on some debt during this, this time when, you know, rates are so low. And we had not, uh, the discussion, which I think we did have this evening, had to do with what is the best way for us to take on that debt and, um, and how. Um, so I appreciate that, but I, I did want to say that it was before talked about in the context of the, um, of project one, so I can understand how there was some confusion there. So I am just recalling our, that last presentation. So just wanted to put that two cents in.
Matt?
Yeah. Hey, Sarah, how are you tonight?
I'm well, thanks.
So, um, I appreciate a lot of the remarks to this point. I've got two or three cents to offer. Uh, and, and I heard ditto from Ralph, and that's Admiral Brevity, Ralph, I appreciate that. I'll be a little bit longer. Uh, a lot of what Craig said, I think, really resonated with me in terms of, okay, what's, what's the rationale? What's the motivation if we do, uh, issue debt and, towards what end? And the, the reality is, we are, our mathematics on all of this is screwy, because we have too much money in the bank. And that is an enviable problem. A lot of school districts would love to have that problem, but it came at a cost. And the cost is that we've had people in this community for years have overpaid. And for us to then issue more debt for future users to pay for future use of the school makes sense in a sensical world, in a sensical history, and we don't have that. And so any kind of debt that we incur, if we were to go that direction, the only way I could support it is if we offset that with some kind of abatement. And I know that the board in past years, we have abated, prior boards as well as this board, have given money back to the community, because it's the least we should do. And so in this case, I feel like, uh, I, that the net effect of all that is that I'm, I'm on the same page, I think, with most everyone, if not everyone, in terms of no to borrowing any money. I appreciate the discussion that we've had, and I, I was expecting something to come back to us in the form of this kind of discussion. But I think we've got that tension, and we've had this tension, and this district has had this tension for years, is that people in the past in this community have paid so much that now they're going, wait a second, we're the ones, also us constituents, that are hurting on an individual level. What are you going to do to acknowledge that and to help offset that? And so, um, I just, uh, I think that's really a tension that, you know, I think we all have that, that's a backdrop to this. And, um, so I, and, and the point is, we're going to be able to borrow money down the road. Banks will still loan money in the future. And if and when we get to that point and we have the actual figures in front of us instead of the projections, I think that's the more appropriate time to look into that. So, uh, that, those are my 2.99 cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Sarah?
Yes, Craig.
I, I just wanted to, you know, didn't want my comments to come off the wrong way. I do want to, actually want to thank Rob and the administration. Uh, this was a good conversation for us to have, and I think we did ask for it. And I think this is part us coming to this own realization, not just, you know, this. So this is all part of a process. So thank you. It was asked for us and it, we've come to a very good place, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I actually have a couple of questions before we close. Um, but Rob, if you want to speak to that, I don't want to cut you off.
I just, just, uh, real quick, uh, thank you, Craig. Um, ju, just, I mean, when we, um, when we, uh, when the Board of Education made the decision last time, they decided that they were going to fund phase one or project one. I know the terminology's evolved, um, with fund balance reserves. And then, then phase two, we were going to see what was going to happen with the state and consider debt certificates at that point in time. And I, and I, and I think, and we had a conversation, and it probably was more speculative then about the, the state's economy, but we contemplated it. And I think that this was a good conversation, because, um, we revisited the situation. I think perhaps it heightens the case, um, if the district does move forward with, uh, some major capital projects beyond phase one to look into debt certificates. But, but it ends up that I think we fared it out, the process significantly, and we ended up back where we, we started, but we, but it wasn't like we didn't do anything to get back to where we started. So I, I do think this was a good exercise. I think that, um, the presentation was, was, was designed for the specific conversation. So I thank everybody for their conversations and comments regarding it.
Thank you. Um, I have a question from Miss Hennessy, just quickly, to Craig's point of, you know, why now, why borrow now, which I agree with, but I just want to, uh, clarify, from what I heard from your presentation, we anticipate that rates are going to remain low for the foreseeable future. Is that fair?
I think so, yes.
Okay. So that, that helps take some of the urgency off of it. Um, and then for Cindy, this is a question for you. Um, my recollection is that our rate of return on our fund balance on our investments is roughly equal to the interest that we would be paying, um, per the 20 million over 15 years. Is that fair or am I misremembering that?
Uh, if you're talking about our investments that we put in through PMA, yes, that is a fair statement.
Right. So it's roughly, it would be roughly equal to the interest rate for the bonds or the debt certificates.
Actually, I, I did take a look at that. And yes, because we, we did a projection and we're projecting like for next year, we would have 1.5 million dollars that we would have in interest.
Okay.
So that's just, yeah, that's what I wanted to show.
Got it.
Yeah, Sarah?
Yeah.
I think, just on that point, but that is based on investments that as they become mature, that's going to go down, is what I thought, you know, that.
That, that will, Tom? That'll go down year 22, not 21, but 22, because we're invested out about a year, year and a half.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that answer was in the context of.
Yes.
How, for how long that, that situation would occur? And it would be somewhat short-lived.
Correct. And even what will happen is, um, but we would be able to, um, be able to pay the, uh, interest back on the bond, oh, from our interest that we received in our investments over a four-year, approximately a four-year period, even with the, the interest going down.
Okay.
Um, so thank you. This is a really helpful conversation. I know we caused some anxiety among our community, um, a little bit around having this conversation, but to Craig's point on our earlier insurance broker conversation, this feels much more strategic, right? To have the information well in advance of when we may need it or act on it, um, is really helpful for making those decisions going forward. Um, so thank you to, uh, Cindy and to Rob for putting this together. I think it's, it's really helpful. But to Matt's point, you know, we, we being very few of us now who are still on the board, but you know, not too long ago, we, um, you know, historically have lost the trust of our community, and that's something that we've been trying very hard to earn back. But I think that having these conversations and being really open about, um, what we're thinking about and how we're thinking about it, and being really mindful, and, you know, to Craig's point, strategic, I think ultimately really helps, um, our community understand better where we're coming from. So thank you, everyone. I think this is really helpful.
Would also like to thank Elizabeth Hennessy for her.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, the next item under finance is the natural gas purchase agreement. Bringing this presentation forward is Carolyn Guz, Director of Purchasing and Transportation, and Becky Thompson, Senior Energy Advisor, Nania Energy Services. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan, uh, Priority Four and District Policy Four Colon 150 and Four Colon 60. At the conclusion, the recommendation is to move forward with this agreement for natural gas for approximately 103,872 dollars per year to the regular Board of Education meeting on May 28, 2020. And I will say that we're bringing this item a year in advance in order to get the rates. Ladies.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Um, I am, in the interest of time, I'm going to, um, assume that you've read the cover memo, you know, the background to, um, our gas purchasing. I'm going to turn the meeting over to, uh, Becks, Becky Thompson from Nania Energy Advisors. She's going to give us an overview of the procurement of natural gas for purchase at a future date. Um, after Becky's presentation, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, with that, I would like to introduce Becky and welcome her back. Uh, she's the Senior Energy Advisor again at Nania Energy Advisors. Take it away, Becky.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Great. Thank you. So thank you all for having me. Um, I'm sure that these meetings in the last few months have been a whirlwind for you guys. Um, so I appreciate you taking the time to look at this. Um, do we have the PowerPoint loaded up that we could scroll down? Or do I need to share my screen?
It's there.
Okay. There should be also some slides in addition to this. Slide chair?
Yes.
Okay.
There are some more.
Okay.
You know what? I can, uh, I can share the presentation. Hold on.
There are several present slides up under this one.
Are there? Okay. It should be, um, have like a cover page on it.
Right. It says Oak Park and River Forest High School Natural Gas. Then the current contract information is the next one.
Perfect. Perfect. That's exactly what we need. Yeah. Thank you very much. Um, so we'll go to the first slide here. Um, uh, so your current. So your current information is that you're with Vanguard Energy Services. And as previously mentioned, you are contracted through the end of June 2021. The product that you have is what we refer to as contracted quantities, meaning that your current provider looked at the last two years of your usage and took an average for each month of what they assumed you would be using in the future. And that is what was fixed on your behalf at a fixed rate. So, for example, if you historically used 100,000 therms in the month of January over the past two years, they would offer you 100,000 therms at a fixed rate. Now, any variable above or below that 100,000 therms would be sold or purchased at market rates. So while you have a fixed rate on your contract, we actually create a weighted average cost per term, taking into account that variance in your pricing for those overages and underages each month. So your current weight, price per term is about 30, excuse me, 35 cents per term. So we'll go to the next slide. And we understand that this is a year in advance, and you have many other things that you're obviously focused on at this moment, and who could have anticipated this COVID-19 kind of knocking us all off kilter like it has. But that's actually the reason that we're having this discussion now. And in what has been some very dark times for many school districts, there's actually some light at the end of this and some good news that we're really excited to share with you. So on this slide, this goes back 13 years, and this shows the forward pricing in terms of one, two, and three years, over the last 13 years. So you can see back in 2008, obviously, when the bubble burst, prices were just out of this world, right? And then since then, since I've been in business, going on eight years, the prices, the, the common theme has always been, we're in historic lows, we're in the lowest prices we've ever seen. And so that has been the trend that we have been able to ride for several years and have been seeing a lot of savings. But if we focus in on just the last 12 months, if you could please go to the next slide, what's been interesting specifically about 2020 is that even prior to COVID and any of the other factors coming into play, is that there's an oil war between Saudi Arabia and Russia that I'm sure you, you've heard about. And natural gas is a byproduct of oil. So while Russia and Saudi Arabia were fighting each other, overproducing oil, they were flooding the market with very, very inexpensive natural gas as well. So domestically, here in the United States, we're a producer of natural gas, or an overproducer of natural gas, to the point that we can start exporting it in the form of liquefied natural gas. And then you have all this influx of additional, very inexpensive natural gas. So we have this surplus, right? So in February, in the winter months, we hit the lowest price of 20 years, unprecedented lows. I mean, just the craziest prices we've seen in two decades. Then COVID happened, and we have all of this really inexpensive natural gas, we have some of the lowest prices of the last 20 years, and then we have demand drop off by almost 50%. So now we have a lot of really inexpensive natural gas and no home for it. And while you would think that the price would continue to go down, what actually happened is that here domestically, the natural gas producers turned off their sticket. Per the Energy Information Administration, since, as of Tuesday, or as of today, versus the first week of March, our rig count here domestically is down 56%. They're not making any money. We're predicting that we're probably going into some sort of recession, though we don't know how long or deep that will go. So they're turning off the sticket. And what this means to us is that the supply and demand curves are going to shift significantly. Here in the United States, electricity, more, about 40% of electricity is generated using natural gas. So as we go into summer and they start rephasing and opening back up, and we start seeing manufacturers come back online, and electricity production soaking up a lot of the natural gas that's available, but no more production really happening, there is less than half, we're starting to see the prices start to go back up. And that's what we're seeing on this curve. So we've in effect, what we see has hit bottom, while we're still in, you know, thinking back to the slide prior to this, in the, in the frame of reference, still in a really, really good position to look at natural gas prices. So if we go to the next slide. So the reasoning that we, we wanted to look at this now is, we wanted to take advantage of, of these, these lows while they're still around. We want to get in while the getting's good, as they say. We do expect a lot of volatility over the next six to 12 months. We have the pending election in November, there's a lot of uncertainty around the state of the economy. We don't know how far the effects of COVID will reach, and if there's going to be a second round. And, like I mentioned before, the reduction in natural gas producing. And I know there's been a lot of talk tonight about speculation and that kind of thing, but in futures purchasing, which is what purchasing electricity and natural gas is, it's all based on assumptions and based on speculation and what we know today. Factors known today which are going to affect prices in the future. Remember, we're, we're purchasing today for what you'll use tomorrow. And so this graph that we have here is, is put out by the EIA. And the dark blue line is the Henry Hub spot price, which is, we get all of our natural gas here in Illinois from the Henry Hub down in Louisiana, and it shoots up the pipeline up to your meter at your district. The dark blue line is where we spend, and that bright blue line is the short-term energy outlook forecast of taking all these factors into account, where do they anticipate prices starting to go? So, your contract is up in 2021. We see where the line is now, you know, right under about 20 cents a therm, just for the, the gas portion only, commodity portion only, not taking into account any of the other transportation or those other pieces. But by 2021, when your contract expires, they expect that to be up to 30 cents. And we're already seeing that trend actually happen in, in real time. So that's just the background of why we did the analysis now and, and wanted to dip our toe in the water and see where prices are and see what, what kind of opportunity there is, both from a savings standpoint from the district, but more importantly, protection from any risk that, that's obviously lingering and on everybody's minds in, in every facet of your business, your school business, and specifically as it relates to energy. So if we can go to the next slide, please? So I want you to focus your attention on this little meter here in the corner. When we talk about risk from an energy standpoint, it's about a couple of factors. It's variability in your price. When we talk about volatility, it means on your monthly invoice, is your rate the same every single month? And, and how much fluctuation that has, and how much you're subject to actual market rates is, is how we associate risk as it relates to your energy costs. Especially being a school district with a lot of changes looming in the, in the potential future, budget certainty tends to be very, very important. So we're going to look on the low-risk side of things with a 100%, 100% fixed product type. If you remember, I just spoke about, your current product is a contracted quantity. There is still a level of variability for any usage above or below your estimated or contracted quantity of, of energy consumption. So, in, in speaking with the administration, there's several different product types that you could look at as a district, and those product types all relate to risk. And this little meter down here of how much risk you're, you're willing to be open to, and how much variability you're, you're willing to be open to from the open market on your monthly invoice. And so it's, through the discussion, the trend that most school districts are leaning towards now is transferring as much risk as possible from you, the district, to the energy supplier, your natural gas partner. And the least, or the most risk adverse, the least risky product available is what we call 100% swing. And this is a type of product that mirrors, much like a, in, in electricity, there's no variability in your price. Your fixed rate is what it is, the only variable each month being your monthly usage. So there's no buying and selling on the open market. If there's a polar vortex, and in the month of January, your usage is double, you are not paying 50% of your bill at open market rates that are 20 or 30% higher than your fixed rate. Everything is offered at the same exact fixed rate that you see here. Because this is the least risky product available, given the current circumstances, a lot of suppliers have stopped offering this product, and because they're taking on more of the risk as a supplier. So we solicited bids from all of the natural gas suppliers in the state, and these were the top three who are able to abide by Prompt Payment Act for extended payment terms and offer you this risk adverse product in the form of 100% swing for natural gas. So we ran a one, two, and three-year scenario, bookending to your current agreement for July 1, 2021. And as you see here, Constellation, Constellation New Energy, which has been, is one of the top gas suppliers in the state, they've been around over 20 years, very robust, backed by Exelon, so they have an excellent credit rating, they're not going anywhere anytime soon. They're able to offer this product at a, at a great rate, and they're also offering as an additional incentive to bring customers to them, a one-time bill credit and the amount of $3,600 on your first invoice, should you choose to use their services. So if we could go to the next slide, please? I know that those numbers are all arbitrary until we put them into context for you, so let's talk about real numbers. So let's compare the 36-month price from Constellation New Energy for the 100% swing product versus what you're currently paying for your weighted average cost per term. So based off your annual usage, this is a 20% savings, almost $26,000 a year. So over the three-year term, it would be a savings to the district of, of over $75,000. And next slide, please? So, open for discussion today, would, would be happy to answer any of your questions. Given what we know about today's state and, and what we expect to happen with all the information, with the reduced production in natural gas, with all the geopolitical factors at play, we would recommend that the, the board seriously consider potentially locking in their, their natural gas starting for next year. Again, this would book into your current agreement, your current agreement would still run through June of 2021, offering you the 20% savings, the one-time bill credit, but most importantly, the budget certainty and the, the usage flexibility. This protects you that if there are any mandated shutdowns, again, where your usage is much lower than anticipated, again, you only pay for the usage you have, there's no selling back to the market, no loss to the district, and it's optimal insulation for many of the market volatility that we, that we predict.
Thanks, Becky. Were there any questions for us?
Yes.
Anyone? Tom?
Yeah, my, my question is, you, you have a recommendation that, again, we're, we're already set through 20, through next July, so it's a three-year period. How did we land on a three-year period? Can you go longer? I'm just curious how that kind of came to be.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question. We can certainly look longer. It's the, the norm right now, most school districts are doing for, three and four-year terms. I'm not certain that all three suppliers would be willing to offer longer terms, but Constellation, I know, probably would, just based, again, off of risk. So for a supplier, the day that you sign a contract with them, they are purchasing that entire load of natural gas for your entire contract that day, and hoping that you pay them back via your energy bills over the term of that contract. So the longer the contract, the more risk that they're taking on as a supplier, and we're seeing more suppliers kind of pull back the hatchet on that a little bit, just because it's a, cash flow's a problem for everyone, and energy suppliers are no, no exception for that. So we can look longer. The reason we settled on the three-year term is, if we want to go back to the actual, I think, one slide up? Oh, one more slide, please, slide six. You see here that the two-year term is actually the low bid. My recommendation for the three-year is because it's a $445 difference between the two-year and the three-year. So if you can save an extra $25,000 and be protected, inflate yourself from the risk with a product that no matter how your usage changes with any project phases that you complete, any, any of the other 10,000 variables we have, you can save another $25,000, and it only costs you $400 more. That's why my recommendation is actually the three-year over the two-year in this instance.
Thank you.
Questions from anyone else? Do we want her to go and ask for a four-year, four-year contract? Is that, is that a request, Tom, or is that, was that...
Um, I mean, as an individual, I, I'm, I, I just was wanting to understand the dynamics, and I think this slide right here that she's showing shows you, I mean, it's the market price that will kind of, I didn't know what the vendors would do. No, I mean, I, I, I'm not, I, I like the idea of doing this, obviously, but I'm not going to be the one who says, go longer.
Okay, there, if there are no questions, did anybody else want her to ask for a four-year rate? No? Okay. All right, thank you so much for this presentation. This was very helpful and very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. Thank you.
I was on mute, sorry about that. That concludes the presentations under Finance. We now move into Instruction. And the first item...
Dr. Pruitt Adams, we take just a quick break. Does, does anybody need a break? We've been going for almost three hours. I'm happy going through, but if folks want to take a few minutes, I'm fine doing that too. Matt nodding? No? You want to take a break? Okay, let's do a five-minute break and come back at 9:15. Is that okay?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I can't see Ralph or Jackie, and I don't see Craig. But if you guys are back.
I'm, I'm Marty Rie here.
Hey, Ralph. I think, I'm going to assume Jackie's here.
See, I don't see her.
Yeah, okay.
I see her name. She, she wasn't showing her visual self. I thought she was only showing her name before. I just see her name.
Sorry, I was getting some water.
You're allowed. Craig, are you back?
I'm going to stay on. I'm going to eat some chips here. So I'm going to go on to no video for a few moments. We don't see any chips, but not going anywhere.
All right, why don't we begin? I think Craig is back. It looks like he unmuted himself. I'm going to assume he's back. It looks like everyone is here. I think we're on instruction item A, the provisional, provisional instructional materials.
Yes. So this is something we bring forward every year. Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent, is bringing it forth. It is in compliance with strategic plan priority two and board policy 6:40. At the conclusion of the presentation, we are asking that the instructional materials item be moved to the regular board meeting on May 28th at a cost of the text planned with, the cost of the text is in each division's budget. So there's no additional cost for the board to approve. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, a few things to add to that really quickly. First, I want to say that, notice here that the, the, the numbers that are referenced in the summary of findings within each department is slightly off. So I will get that cleaned up before I bring it to the board for full approval next week. I also want to remind the board that this is an item that are, that is full of supplemental materials. So these are not texts that are the core text for any course. This is a process that allows for needed flexibility and some creativity in our courses from a yearly basis. But, and as a reminder of what that process really looks like, each year, department members, teachers come up with different texts that they want to use for different reasons. They explain their rationale to the division head. If the division head approves it, they send it to me in a formal request for my provisional approval. Sometimes depending on the text, I'll discuss that back with the division head, talk with our, our director of student learning. And then, you know, those texts get approved that way just for a provisional use. And then if they are texts that the teachers, in fact, and the division head approves, should be used on a more permanent basis, they make it on this list. And so many of these texts not only are baked into kind of next year's division budgets, many of these texts are actually already in-house being purchased from this current year's budgets. I, I also, I don't want to go any further with this without highlighting the very first text. It is a yet to be published. It's going to be maybe slightly delayed because of what's going on in our world right now. But this is an anthology of our own students' work. Peter Cott is, is, is an editor of this text along with several others. And it should be a very exciting thing to bring into our, into our school. This includes a wide array of our own students' work. So we're really excited to, to have that in-house next school year. So with that said, that's, I'll open it up.
I just want to be a proud mother for a second. My son, who was in spoken word, is one of the authors in the poetry books. So I'm very proud.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about this item?
The only question I have.
How do we get an autograph from Jackie's son?
Okay. I'm sure we can arrange that. The, for the, they are listed by courses. Does this mean that every section of the course will use these supplemental texts?
Not in all cases. In some cases, they are used by all sections. In other cases, they're, they're more, they're in the category of choice texts. So they may or may not be used depending on teacher preference or student preference, actually, in courses. I know several of these texts are part of kind of lit circle groups that, that are implemented in our freshman English classes.
And just one other question about, from the standpoint of our racial equity policy and looking at curriculum, the texts that, that are featured here seem for the most part to be looking at being racially and culturally sensitive to our, more of our racial groups. So is there some way that we're measuring now that that is our policy? How we're onboarding additional texts?
Yeah, as part of the, of the initial proposal that goes to each division head. And to me, there's a explanation, we're using language that had, has existed in the district for quite a while, about cultural pluralism. But that has to be present in the explanation for all of these texts before it can get through the stage to my office. And so that's, that's what it's handled right now. Now, as we look at implementing the, the, the procedures that LeVar will be talking about later in June, the exact process we do, you know, that whole, all those procedures can shift maybe this process for next school year. But we don't know exactly how that's going to unfold until we have that conversation. But, so the method that we had in place is certainly in place here as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And any other questions? All right, well, congratulations to our spoken word club and the amazing work they do. And the anthology looks fantastic.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So I'm assuming it's available on Amazon and wherever fine books are sold.
Not, not quite yet, Sarah, but down the road, I'm sure it will be available all over the place. But it actually, we had hoped to get this right within, in the building, right at the beginning of the school year. But it looks like it's going to be delayed until into first semester just because, you know, everything has slowed down to some extent right now. But, but hopefully we can get it on Amazon down the road soon.
Right. All right. Well, thank you very much for this presentation.
Yep.
Thank you. The next item is the 2020 recognition of teachers for tenure being presented by Dr. Roxanna Sanders, Sanders, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. This item is in compliance with district policy. The recommendation is really for discussion. So there's no action required by the board. Dr. Sanders?
Thank you. Every year, we present of teachers that earned recognition, earned tenure during the school year. And last year, I described the new rule in Illinois where tenure can be earned in three different ways, which is traditional tenure, where teachers have to complete four years of service in a school district and earn at least a rating of proficient. Now there are two new ways of earning tenure, which is accelerated tenure and portable. Last year, we had one person with supportable tenure. That is when somebody earned tenure in a previous district and then received two excellent evaluations in a new district. This year, we don't have any teachers who earned tenure this way. But we do have three teachers out of nine who got tenure into an accelerated fashion, which is where you get three consecutive excellent evaluations in the school district. So in the memos that you received, there are names listed of nine teachers that will receive tenure at the end of the school year. And three out of them are accelerated. This is for information only. Tenure is awarded in according with Illinois School Code.
Any comments or questions on this item?
Just an observation I had, and I don't know if it sparks any insight or if it's just a, an interesting aberration. But six of the nine are in the special ed department, I noticed. And so, I don't know, it seems to be disproportionate. So it just happens to be they're coming through at the same time. But I don't know if there's any, any further insight or anything beyond that that could be read into that, Dr. Sanders.
It depends on when we have vacancies and when people are hired.
Right, so four years ago, right? So, so, yeah. And so I don't know if that particularly means, if there's any meaningful aspect to this. It's not like there's a surge in more, significantly more hires of special ed. It's just.
So four years ago, we had quite a few vacancies in special education. That's, that's what it means, really.
Vacancies are new hires, right? I mean, we.
Yes.
Either turnover or new hire. I, I had a question just regarding the, the ratings. So just so that I'm clear, the, you, you, thank you for providing the feedback. And I think your data shows that for each of the last three years, we've seen just around 70% of our teachers receive an excellent rating. Is that?
That's correct. Just a reminder, teacher, on it, tenure teachers are on a two-year cycle. So they receive one rating every two years. And then non-tenure teachers are evaluated every single year.
And those ratings are provided by whom? Who's, who is providing them with that rating?
The evaluator. So it's a division head.
Anything else? All right, thank you for this presentation.
So now we go into the policy section. The first, these are policies for first read. The first policy for, for read is policy 4:50 payment procedures. This is up for the five-year review. Are there any questions tied to this policy? The next one is 7:170 vandalism. We did receive a question tied to this, I believe. The answer was provided. And this is up for just a five-year review by press. Are there any questions?
Not on that one, but on the one before it, 360.
No, I haven't gotten to that one yet. I'm going in the order that's in the explanation folder. I'm sorry, is that a separate order from?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize they were, I got two screens. So let me, Chris, could you click on the? Okay, so 3:60 is responsibilities of the principal?
Yeah, there's, there's a requirement that the principal complete state law required training to be a pre-qualified evaluator before the principal evaluates faculty members or others. Now, obviously, we don't have a principal anymore. And there's no corresponding language in that policy that says whomever is replacing this principal has to complete this state law requisite on being a quote-unquote pre-qualified evaluator. So I think we probably need to clean that up.
That, we can, we can clean that up. Both Greg and I are certified to do the principal evaluation. And so, well, we can clean that up. That's a good point. Okay. The next one is 7:170 vandalism. That's a press for review. Any questions on that one? Chris, could you scroll down so I could see the next one? I'm toggling between two computers now. Thank you. The next one is 7:325 student fundraising activities. This was up for a press five-year review. Are there any questions on this one? The next one is policy 8:80 gifts to the district. This two is up for a five-year review.
Yeah, this is Marty Rie again. I think this one, we need to have a board discussion on and not tonight. But it's got some language in it that would conflict with this new foundation that's being set up that wants to do fundraising around capital projects for the district. It also has other language in there that I don't think is germane anymore. But I, but this isn't just sort of a technical cleanup. I think this is something that we probably should have a board discussion around to make sure that whatever we're doing with accepting gifts comports with what we want now versus what was going on back then.
Thank you, Gail.
That's a very good catch. Yeah, and we should probably have our attorneys weigh in as well, just to make sure that everything's square.
Thank you. Gail, you can pull that one.
Yes, I, given that comment, Ralph, I have a, I guess, a procedural board procedure question. How are we acting as, I know that, and things may change given our turnover in our leadership of the board officers. But we had you and Sarah as our de facto policy committee. So is that something that goes to the full board or will it be vetted? Are we going to have that process? We had talked about that in the past. So I'm not sure if, as a board, we're continuing.
No, Jackie, that's a great point. I think what I would like to do is sit down with Sarah as a policy committee and just go over, you know, some suggestions I have on language for fixing this. Get her mind and then bring it to the board once we've talked through the issues. And I know all the board members, for instance, on this one in particular, have had or will be having meetings with Fred and Steve and, who are running the foundation. But there are certain, certain ones of these policies. There's a couple of other ones that are coming up where I think we do need a board discussion. And, and, and we do need to, Sarah and I have talked about going through all the board policies to identify a certain number of them that we would get a different kind of reporting on to ensure that we are playing our appropriate role in overseeing the implementation of these policies. But we haven't had a chance to do that meeting yet. And COVID kind of messed up the in-person meeting. But Sarah and I will get one done by teleconference. But that's what I think should happen to save the board some work. And then we'll bring a recommendation to the board of a revised version of 880.
So may I just ask a question for clarification? I know that you and Sarah are the board reps. I know that you and Sarah are the board reps for the policy committee, and Roxanna and I are the administrative reps, and you spoke of you and Sarah. So, would that include Roxanna and I, or no?
Yeah, so what I would like to do is talk with Sarah first, and then loop you guys in. I would just like to go through it from a board perspective, then we'll loop you guys in and make sure you're comfortable with all that, and do it as a committee, and then go forward from there.
So, is this the time to ask another procedural question?
Sure.
So, if we, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. So, like, this time, we sent the policies and asked for questions and feedback. Is that how you want us to proceed, or just wait till we hear from you and Sarah, or do a monthly meeting? I just want to make sure that we're doing what the board expects us to do.
Well, I think the five-year review, we don't necessarily know which ones are up for review. So, it would be helpful to, you know, understand when we last reviewed our policies so that we can make sure that we're handling that aspect of it. I, you know, I've been reading through the policies, fascinating, and just sort of making notes, and I think Ralph is doing the same, and our thought was to get together, compare notes. So, I don't know that I have a specific. I mean, I guess if we're going back to a structure committee for a policy, it would make sense to have Ralph and I sort of get a first pass at it to see if we can save the board work, but ultimately, the board still has to read and pass the policies.
Yeah, I understood that part. I'm just asking for clarification. So, if there are things that need to be changed, or that we think need to be changed, how do you want that communicated? Because we also go through the policies. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, so I think to make your life easier, like, for instance, the five-year review, then flip it to me and Sarah, hey, these policies up for five-year review. Sarah and I will go through it. We'll talk. We'll clean up the stuff we feel needs to be cleaned up based on current things. Sit down with you, or send it back to you and Dr. Sanders for you guys to okay, and then it goes to the board. What we're trying to do is make it less of a laborious process at the board level and more of a cleanup behind the scenes. And then Sarah and I are going to be a little more proactive in trying to clean up some of these procedures that have been around, or policies that have been around for a while and may or may not make sense. And some of them will require a board discussion.
So, should we do the same thing with those that aren't five-year review?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next one is 5:200, Terms and Conditions of Employment. This is from press. There's a legal reference has been updated from issue 102 from October 2019. Are there any questions on that? I do want to reference, we did pull several policies as an administration tied to the new Title IX regulations or requirements. So, we'll come back with those later. 6: Make sure I'm on the right one. 6:300, graduation requirements. There's been some final citation that's needed, but that has been added, the Form for Exemption for Financial Aid Application, completion, logging in to the website. It's also been amended as staff or service member who is in the.
Carolyn, you're hardly audible.
Oh, that's because I'm toggling between two computers. I'm sorry.
We can't hear you on that.
So, I have to turn my head to look at one. Anyway, it's also tied to service members killed in action or from the veterans of World War II, the Korean Conflict, or the Vietnam Conflict, and it can be accessed by press. Any questions on the graduation changes? The next one is Policy 2:125, Board Member Compensation for Expenses. And this is being changed by, required by the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, GADA. And so, just putting in some specifics for the board with regards to travel expenses charged to state and federal grants. And travel expenses charged to federal, as due grants, and state grants covered by the GADA. Are there any questions on that one? The next one is 2:160, Board Attorney. This is updated in response to a five-year review.
Yeah, I think this one needs some cleanups. I'll talk it over with Sarah.
Okay.
So, would you have that before the board meeting?
Yeah, that one's an easy one. That'll be a 10-minute phone call with Sarah.
And then you'll send me the changes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is 7, 2:70, Vacancies on the Board of Education. And this is updated in response to Illinois School Code. The questions arise when fewer individuals run for seats on the board than are up for election. And then it makes, gives you a reference to a sample. Any questions on that one? The next one is 2:200, Types of Meetings. And it's just updated. And then there's a disclosure payment, also includes payment for acclimated sickly. That doesn't make sense with that, but. The next one is Policy 3:40E, Checklist for Superintendent Employment Contract Negotiations Process. And Gail, I'm looking on this list I have.
Yes.
I don't see it yet. I'm scrolling. Oh, there it is, down there. Okay, this new exhibit is intended to serve as a resource to educate and guide the board through the superintendent employment contract negotiations process, encouraging both the board and the superintendent to hire their own attorneys. Any questions on that? The next one is 5:100, Staff Development Programs. I have to find it again now, mother. Okay. This one was updated in response to the Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting Act. And we did consult the board's attorney for guidance. Are there any questions tied to this one? The next one is 5:150, Personnel Records. Just the legal reference was updated. Any questions? The next one is 5:20, Substitute Teachers. This one has a legal reference that was updated as well. The next one is 5:250, Leaves of Absence. And this was updated because of an amended school code and to include requirements for the Victims Economic Security and Safety Act. Any questions? 5:280, Duties and Qualifications. There's a legal reference was updated in response to the amended Illinois State Board of Education rules governing educator license. The next one is 5:60, Expenses. This too is required by the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, GADA, and it's tied to reimbursements, actual expense reimbursements when they're made. And then it makes reference to a board member's estimated expense approval form. Any questions? The next one is 5:70, Religious Holidays. The recommendation was for the removal of unnecessary language. Are there any questions? Next is 6:135, Accelerated Placement Programs. And this tied to the rule that this policy be posted on the district website. And it also requires districts to annually report by July 31 demographic information regarding students participating in accelerated programs. Are there any questions? 6:280, Grading and Promotion. This started in, starting 2019, Park is no longer used, and so, it's really changing the language that was in there tied to state assessments and accountability measures. Any questions? The next one is 7:70, Attendance Intruency. And this is updated in accordance to school code and status that beginning the 15th day for primary, general, and special elections or on the days of such election, any student who is eligible to vote is entitled to be absent for two hours during the school day.
Yeah, on 770, I'm going to have to talk a few things over with Sarah. I don't know that our district does or has ever done. I don't know if we've got in place a diagnostic procedure for identifying the causes of students with unexcused absenteeism. Policy calls for that. Policy calls for professional development on absentee and truism program for faculty, staff, and the Board of Directors, Board of Education. I don't think we do that. So, I think this policy needs to be looked at and modernized to really reflect our actual practice. So, I'll talk that one over with Sarah.
So, do you want us to pull this? Do you think you'll have it in time for the board meeting?
I don't know that we'll get that one sussed out in time. I do think we should pull this one. This one might need some serious cleanup. It just seems very old.
Okay. The next policy is 7:90, Release During Full Hours. And this has a required question that must be added that provided beginning on the 15th day before the primary, general, and special election. Any student who is eligible to vote be allowed to miss two hours of school. Districts may specify the hours which eligible students may be absent. Do you want to pull this one as well? Or did I just do the same 100? Do you want to pull this one for the same reasons?
Yeah, we should just read them together. Yeah.
Okay. The next one is 8:10, Connection with the Community. And this one is being updated in response to a five-year review, and only minor changes were made. Any questions?
There were, I think this is the one I had comments on about things we are doing regarding videotaping, et cetera, and it was in the questions, and I think.
Oh, was that your question? We weren't clear on. And so, is this the one we were pulling, Gail? Where you asked about town halls and so forth?
That was the, that was 811, that is 8110.
Oh, that's the next one. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and Tom, to follow up on that, 810 has a list of eight different elements that are supposed to be in some comprehensive plan developed for communication with the community for the board that I don't. If it does exist, I'm unaware of it. So, we should probably make sure that we're actually in compliance with this one.
Right.
Okay. So, we're going to probably, we pulled that one to look at it, Gail.
Okay, so 790, do we finish that?
That one was pulled along with 770.
Okay, thank you. And 6280. Okay, thank you.
And now, 810.
Got it. Thank you.
8110, Public Suggestions and Concerns, is tied to the Illinois Educational Labor Relations Act requires employers to establish email policies in an effort to prohibit the use of email systems by outside sources. Are there any questions tied to this one? Okay. The next one is 2:220-E1, Board Treatment to Closed Meeting Verbatim Recording and Minutes. And this is, well, the responsibility for the storage of verbatim recordings and closed session minutes may be dedicated to anyone. It's been amended, adding another purpose for access to verbatim recordings and closed session minutes, and it requires certain individuals to be present when seated, board members request access to these items. Are there any questions?
I mean, I have a question, actually, in light of COVID-19, right? I mean, how do we? It must be provided in the public body's main office in the presence of these various individuals. You know, I don't know how many requests we're going to have for access, but it seems to me that we wouldn't be able to comply with this right now.
Well, I think we could. There's a limited number of people that would have access to that, so. And I would be available, and we would do social distancing.
Okay, fair enough.
I think we could handle it.
Okay, the next one is 2:22E7, Access to Closed Meeting Minutes at Verbatim and Verbatim Recordings. And this is added in response, and this is a sample for logistical implementation. Any questions? The next one is 4:130E, Free and Reduced Price Lunch Services Meal Charge Notification.
Yeah, this one's got some legal issues in it. It authorizes, it says, state law, this, I'm quoting from it, state law allows the building principal to contact parents to collect money in certain situations. Well, we don't have a building principal. I don't know if state law authorizes anybody else to do it, or if we as a district have the authority to authorize anyone else to do that. And the building principal is still mentioned a couple of times in this one. So, I think this one probably needs to be pulled, and we need to talk to our lawyers about it.
Okay. The next one is 340-E, Checklist for the Superintendent Employment Contract Negotiations.
Actually, we've done this.
I thought, I can say, didn't we just do this?
Yes, it's a duplication, so I apologize.
Okay. The next one is 7:130, Student Rights and Responsibilities. This is a five-year review. And the last one is 350, Administrative Personnel Other Than the Superintendent. And the Board of Education recommended a date change for the evaluations. That's when you had us to change the date for things to be done so that you could get them in a timely manner. Any questions on that one? Gail, could you repeat the ones that are being pulled to be reviewed?
Yes. Just give me a moment. All right, the ones that are going to be pulled are 6280, 770, 790, 810. And I think that's all of them.
Okay, that concludes all we have.
Thank you very much. We're now on future agenda. Um, thank you very much. We're now on future agenda items. Craig had raised one around, um, how can we be more strategic about our insurance benefits? I'm probably misstating that, Craig, so if you wanna revise what I just said, feel free.
I think that's good enough.
Uh, had a conversation around how we can be more strategic with our employee benefits.
Thank you.
And the involvement of the board in those strategic conversations.
Any other future agenda items?
I have one, Sarah, that I think is important for us to have for the next meeting if possible. And it has to do with the COVID nineteen stat, you know, situation and its impact on project one. And I know that that's something that the administration and others involved are working through to some degree, though there's a lot of unknown. I think it's important that it gets on the agenda and is discussed publicly because it's, it's, it's obviously in our midst and, um, you know, cafeteria is a, is a big chunk of this and that's an area where a lot of people congregate. So I just think it's important to acknowledge that this is a new thing that we're trying to factor in some way. And Dr. Prude Adams, I know, is working as best she can to, to, you know, get a handle on that with other professionals. But I just, I really think it's important and not just in the board meeting, but beyond the board meeting for that to come out in some fashion, so.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you're asking. Are you speaking solely construction? Or are you speaking the internal logistical, social distancing places of furniture and, and disinfecting and all of that?
Good question. I would say as broadly as you can address this possible would be really helpful. But I think it's important to, um, to, you know, incorporate the project one. You know, I don't know if in particular is the right phrasing, but certainly acknowledging that, you know, we're going into this, yeah, just this crazy timing.
So, um, to me, those are like two separate things. We are working currently on a plan for what school looks like next year. We have a steering committee. And then we have various subcommittees, um, as I think I said.
Okay, so Dr. Adams, if I could ask, so to just supplement, what I was gonna ask for is I, I would like to know who is involved in the planning for the reopening of the schools in the fall? Whether or not we have any medical professionals involved in that? And, and, um, whether or not any community members are involved, if you've got a task force or it's all internal. And, and then I would like to have a, an agenda item cover uh, where you're going with prepping for some combination of remote learning combined with onsite learning combined with flexible hours. I mean, I, I think I would like to both know who is involved in making this decision? And, and then where this, what types of decisions are being considered? And I think that would be a good future agenda item for, it's early July, end of June.
What I was going to say is our plan is to bring forward at the June meeting, uh, the June regular board of education meeting, a draft of our plan for the upcoming year. Yes, uh, each subcommittee is to have teacher voice, student voice, and community voice on that committee. There's various components tied to every aspect you could think of. Or as I said, our plan is to bring a draft to the June meeting. Uh, by virtue of superintendents are still waiting on, as you saw in the end of week notes, we're still waiting on part two uh, from ISB with guidance. Uh, in our superintendent meeting the other day, we talked about all that we are looking at. And yes, we are looking at in person. We are looking at a hybrid that we've been asked not to call it blended. And we're looking at remote, uh, where, but we've been told to, uh, wait for some guidance. We're looking as far as, you know, how we get kids.
Okay, so Dr. Adams, you're gonna have to respond to that now. I mean, what I, what I wanna know is who's on the team.
Absolutely.
And what you're, what you're considering. And that's a future agenda item.
All of that is scheduled for our June regular board of education meeting. What I was asking, uh, uh, Mr. Barron was, is he seeing the construction piece as a separate presentation? Or as a part of that presentation as well? So that we know if we need to come in with two or one.
And, and I would, I would, I, I don't really know, um, what would be better or, you know what I mean? So I defer to you and, you know, the leaders on, on site there to ferret that out. I will say that I think June it'd be most welcome, but at the same time, I know that I think it's important that we have some further discussion maybe next week, even if it's to say something similar to what you've just said, Dr. Prude Adams. In terms of that we're constrained from saying too much based on other guidance that we're waiting for and that it's, it's a fast emerging realm of expertise. And so I, I, you know, um, some intermediate conversation next week, I think, would be helpful and beneficial.
Okay, if my hesitancy with that in a public meeting? You know, I could send it in the end of week notes. In a public meeting, a lot of times what is said is then taken to be the, the end all be all. And that's definite what it is. Uh, and that is not the case. And so like I said, our plan is to bring forth a draft and then to get at each board meeting given update moving forward from that June meeting as to where we are. If it is the boys who wish that we have a discussion at next week's board meeting, I, I have to say that's kind of preempting because we have our next steering committee meeting on the twenty ninth. Cause we were giving them some time to begin to develop something. And the best I could give you next week is the, the steering committee makeup and the areas we are focusing on.
Well, you know, and I appreciate the predicament and the timing issues. And one thing that might be helpful is some kind of a communication that comes out of the communications department, right? From Karen to, to, to frame it or to give it its boundaries through someone. So I know that it's inevitable that it's gonna be, I, I just feel like there's a, um, a, an automatic vacuum that this community fills really fast on a daily basis. And so I'm just trying to see what we can do to try to get in front of or at least come alongside some of that. That's all. But, you know, I'm just one and, and I'm not emphatic on this. It's just something that I know is, you know, with every passing, every day feels like a week and every week feels like more than a month. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I would prefer to do it in the end of week notes.
And it's, it's Gina, can I, um, can I just add?
Please.
Um, you know, being a person who's in this field right now, experiencing what's happening and how rapidly the change happens? And how, and seeing how quickly information does get misconstrued? And how quickly things change, I honestly, I'm, I actually really appreciate how quickly Dr. Prude Adams and her team has been responding to everything that has been coming up. I am just really appreciative of all of, you know, in light of the myriad of things that they're having to deal with on this, you know? I, and I understand that people are really anxious to get information and wanna know things. Um, but I would caution us as a board to, in, in this, in this, in these conversations. Because this push to want to know things is another attempt to other people. And I'm not saying that that's anything that you're doing, Matt, but I'm just saying like in our community that attempt to other people and other, you know, they're over there doing this and they're not doing enough or this isn't happening is really prevalent right now. And, um, I would love for us as a board to just be really mindful of where that starts to come up and for us to not feed it in any way. Because I know that they're getting us as much information as they can. And I understand the request for wanting to hear, um, who's on, who's involved, all of that. I totally get that. And I find it very challenging to make a recommendation of something in a week when we've been, that, when they've already been working under all of these extreme pressures. It just feels like, it feels like a lot and, um, as someone experiencing this right now, I, I just am really highly mindful of how much is actually going into making the best possible decisions on a daily basis based on things changing every single day. So, um, I just had to throw that in there.
Thanks, Gina. And, and I, and I think it's just helpful to have a dialogue. And so I appreciate that. And so anyone else, of course, I'll just mute myself again. Thanks.
Um, Matt, to your point, I think, you know, I think obviously you raise a valid point. Let me talk to Dr. Prude Adams about it. We, during our weekly talk on Friday and sort of see if we can come up with a timeline for, um, being able to provide some of that information. Some might be easy, right? Like who's on the steering committee is a pretty, you know, they already know the names. We can probably do that pretty quickly. And then some of it will take in all likelihood, uh, additional time and, and, uh, research, so.
Sarah, I had a comment. Um, I just wanna make sure the, this section of our agenda that we're getting consensus, that it doesn't turn into individual requests from board members. Um, I did hear Ralph's suggestion for an agenda item and I heard Matt's. But I don't know that they've risen to the level of, um, a date to be assigned. So I just wanna be sure that we're not, um, overloading our agendas or our administration or ourselves.
Anything?
Sarah?
As I said.
I, I had a future agenda item that's of lower priority, but it's something that has come up. And we've had discussions about the concept of revoting, about issues coming back. And I would like to at least put that out there in terms of what policy and procedure exists for something to come back to the board and be voted on again. So. Thank you.
Dr. Prude Adams, was there something that you'd wanted to add?
So I've, I've indicated to the board, our plan has been to come to the June meeting with a comprehensive draft of the plan for how we reopen school. Um, my question now is, I was, you know, I had one board member asked to bring something next week. That is a full board meeting with long presentations. Um, I've offered to do it in the end of week notes. And then I, I heard you say we could talk about timeframes and our plan is to communicate routinely. We even have a subcommittee working on a communications plan. I just need some clarity about what it is we are being asked to do. And when we are being asked to do it beyond the June regular board meeting date. Because I've given a timeline to the committee, the steering committee and the subcommittees. And if I have to go back and alter that timeline, then I need to know that. But I feel remiss if I don't say that's getting into the management side of things.
Understood. So my thought is this, um, we'll continue with the timeline that you've established with your committees uh, so that you can go through that full process. Um, information can be, uh, meted out during end of week notes as you feel is appropriate. Um, and then in terms of who is on the committee, which, um, I think is not an unreasonable request, that too could come out in end of week notes um, or June, what, you know, as that works for you and your stakeholders.
Thank you.
Um, you know, this is too important a topic to be rushed, although I do appreciate Matt's, um, sense of urgency. I don't disagree. But.
We don't disagree either. We don't disagree. A lot of the superintendents, we feel like we're spinning our wheels because we are waiting on some guidance because we don't wanna go down one path and then have to turn around and come back and go down another.
Yeah, I appreciate your being candid about the situation as you always are. And so I think it's been fruitful to hear all the balls in the air that you deal with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, could I interject just one thing, Sarah? And Dr. Prude Adams? I just wanted to say, Dr. Prude Adams has been doing weekly communications to families. And without going into details about it, I do think that this week's communication would say that we are working on a plan. To, to your point, Matt, that people just wanna know that we are, we are working on various scenarios that we're addressing it. We're not just ignoring it. So I think that, that's kind of what you're speaking to.
Yeah, exactly. I just, yeah, I, I have no doubt about all the happening. I guess it's a matter of, you know, how to manage the communication outreach. So I appreciate all that you're doing as well, Karen.
Yep.
Okay, all right. And Tom, I, I heard your comment as well. And we can, maybe you and I can talk offline a little bit about what that conversation might look like before the board. Um, and we can discuss that in a future July, August, somewhere a little bit further down the road. Um, so do I have a motion to, so I'm sorry, Gail, just quickly before we get off, is do we go to a different Zoom room for the net, for the special board meeting? Or we stay here? We adjourn this and reopen in the same place?
You should.
I think that we adjourn, we, we adjourn this and then we reopen.
Okay, and we don't go anywhere.
I gotta, you may wanna check with Chris.
That's what I said, yes.
Going to for closed session, then we gotta email for another for closed session.
Yeah, we go elsewhere. We get onto a different Zoom.
For the closed, yeah. Okay.
This one.
All right. Uh, so I moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Um, are people okay with going straight through?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great.